Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Ridgecrest City Council. We'll go ahead and call our meeting to order now at 5:33 PM with our roll call.
Mayor Bruin?
Here.
Mr. Rajaradhan.
Present.
I was caught off guard because I wanted to say Blades, and so I'm looking at you going, thinking a different name. Mr. Heyman?
Present.
Mr. Gorman?
Present.
We have four present with Mr. Blades absent, but we do have a quorum.
Okay. Our next item is our approval of our agenda as presented. Is there any changes or revisions to the agenda?
No, sir.
Hearing none, do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
So, move.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Roll call.
Mayor Bruin?
Aye.
Mr. Rajaradhan?
Aye.
Mr. Heyman?
Aye.
Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
We'll be moving into closed session, and we'd like to provide an opportunity for public comment. Is there any public comment on the closed session?
Nope. Not your turn. You're next. Next time.
Okay, hearing none, we're going to go on adjourned to closed session. We'll be returning from our, to our regular session at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
For the record, may... ...........................................................................................................................................................................
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Ridgecrest City Council. We will return from closed session to our regular session and at 6:05 PM. And if I can ask everyone to please join me in standing for our pledge of allegiance. Officer, will you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Rajaradhan.
Please join me in prayer, if you would. Lord, thank you for giving us this day. Lord, thank you for the privilege you have given to us to be on the city council. Lord, fill us with your wisdom, with your understanding, so that we make right decisions which are beneficial to this community, Lord. Lord, pray for the country and the freedom we enjoy. Lord, pray for our troops who are in harm's way, protect them from all evil, Lord. And I pray for all people who are sick and suffering, give them your comfort and their healing. I pray for the missing submarine which went to see the Titanic, Lord. We pray for the safety of the crew and the passengers in there. Lord, bless each one of us here today. And as we continue this meeting, Lord, let these proceedings go as per your will and as per your direction. In Jesus' precious name I pray. Amen.
I'm not sure if Martin is on the line or not. I don't see him. Martin, are you there?
I am.
Okay. Attorney Report out of closed session.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. One item was considered by the council, potential litigation. No other actions were taken in closed session by the city council.
Thank you, sir. Next item on our agenda this evening is, of course, our public comment of items not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Council will not respond to any public comments, but may provide direction to staff to collect information pursuant to the Brown Act. The city council may not act on any item that does not appear on this agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. The public comment section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker has asked to provide his or her name, and we'll begin with public comment from the floor. Is there any public comment from the floor? Just please stand and come right up to the podium, sir.
Here's specifically trash, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you will have to wait for that.
Yeah, trash is, if it's regarding the waste management contract, that would be a agendaized item. I believe that is item...
Number seven.
Correct, sir.
Hi, how's it going?
Good, sir.
Good. My name is Joe David. I'm the owner-operator at Sierra Auto Recycling at Ridgecrest. I'd like to speak about abandoned RV and trailers. We're, as a tow yard and a dismantling facility, we're called out on rotation to sometimes remove these vehicles. They're huge expense, they're no longer insured, they're hazardous waste with sewage, and I have no way of dealing with them, nor do I think any other tow yard that's to properly dispose and/or recycle these vessels. And so it's really tough to deal with. They take up three times the amount of space a normal vehicle does, and there's no one to pay for them to be dismantled or recycled or disposed of properly. Not even just on rotation, but also on a personal level for people on the street trying to dispose of things that have been abandoned on their properties. Basically, when you look these up to how to deal with it, one of the comments is to call your local city dump. And as of right now, the city dump does not have a program, according to them, to dispose of said vehicles. What I'm suggesting is if there's a way to create a program where the city and tow facilities and/or dismantler can create to either take to the dump, to have the hazardous waste and/or non-recyclable materials removed before it is taken to a dismantling facility to be recycled. In any case, even at that, they are still too large to go into a crusher that is designed for vehicles, so they'll still have to be cut in half to be properly recycled and disposed of. So my main gripe is that it's just an extreme cost and loss to any tow yard that does take it on, and I know it's a constant problem. But at the same time, I want to see the city clean. I don't think that these items attract the best type of people that we want in our city or in it, and I want to find a solution to be able to cost-effectively get rid of these in a proper manner.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment from the floor?
Hello, my name is Mike Senott. First of all, I'd like to make, point your attention to Roadrunner395.com. I'm going to talk about that tonight, and I'm going to talk about Placer AI. I understand that you're going to hold off on a decision to use that and bring it to an agenda item. Is that correct?
Council doesn't comment during public comment.
Are you going to bring it in, up to an agenda item?
Council doesn't comment during public comment.
Let us know that. Okay. Roadrunner395 was started three years ago in response to being cut off by former Mayor Peggy Breeden during lockdown after you were, closed the city council. I might have been able to escape this town three years ago, but things didn't work out, and I've spent literally thousands of hours researching and writing on events in this town. I've put up 100, excuse me, I've put up 116 posts, starting with one called the China Lake Heritage Restoration Act, which was a response to the idea of annexing out to 300, or Highway 395, which I think is insane. And I've concentrated on water. I understand real estate, I understand water. I grew up in China Lake, and I had the benefit of being here when Kennedy visited in 1963. I grew up on that base during the Vietnam War. I was probably one of the first conspiracy theorists. That was when the label was first affixed to people that questioned the Warren Commission's report on the single gunman assassination theory of JFK. Now we know it was the CIA that was involved, probably the mafia, some other characters. That kicked off a lifetime of inquisitiveness, and I learned about the secret societies that Kennedy warned us about. I learned about the military-industrial complex from the inside. I crawled in the laboratories at Michelson. And I learned about what was going on with the global new world order. It's really nothing new, and kind of disappeared from the scene. They first started out calling for depopulation, and then it became global cooling, and abortion was a big issue, and civil rights. And all along, I've known that there is a powerful cabal in this world that had a plan, and shockingly, it's become very visible over the last three years. I call what's happened to the world a global coup d'etat. And our president is not our president. He's a, he's a fake. January 6th was a staged event. The election was stolen. The COVID-19 virus was manufactured in a lab paid for with American dollars through the CDC and the NIH. You've all been lied to constantly for the last 60 years. And now we come to Placer AI, which I call the eye in the sky. And if you can visualize data, a big pot of data accumulating of information about every single one of you, and then combining that data with a GPS tracking system, you'll know how fearful this technology will be. I'll call it the digital Gulag. You're going to have to have a vax passport, probably going to have to have permission to go into grocery stores. So I better, I better, I think I've been right about everything I've warned you about over the last three years, and I'm warning you now, do not implement this technology, Placer AI. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment from the floor? Okay. Is there any public comment on the phones? Seeing none. Once again, the phone number is on our YouTube. It is at the bottom, and there will be a call always for phone calls or calling in. I will allow a few seconds just to make sure if there's anybody who'd like to comment. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment section and move to our council announcements and direction. Mr. Gorman, we'll begin with you.
I'm, I'm just now getting used to what he means by this particular section, and I'm stalling so he can finish. I'm restarting the US 395 safety program here locally. This is an image I developed that's sort of edgy, and I and 10 to 12 different retail activities in the city are helping me distribute these. And I think right now we have close to 10,000 on windshields and bumpers around the city. It says if you're gonna, if you're gonna get out on 395, especially if you're headed south, put your head on a swivel, swing in behind a ponderous truck who will block for you and helpfully keep you out of trouble. So the stickers will start appearing around town, $3 each. I use the money, all of the money, simply to buy more stickers, and that was my announcement. Is that the sort of thing that goes here?
Yeah, it could be anything that's, if you have any announcements, events, things coming up, but that was perfectly fine, Skip. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Doc?
I'll just add on to what Councilman Skip was discussing with 395. I talked with an individual who just moved here, and on his way to Ridgecrest to move here, he was passed on 395 by a vehicle who had, he was heading north to Ridgecrest, and a vehicle passed the vehicle that was behind him, and there was a car coming head-on, so they had to split. He had no idea what was happening because he's driving north, minding his own business, and the car, to avoid hitting head-on, side-swiped him, took him out to the desert and totaled his vehicle. And so I, my comment to him was, welcome to Ridgecrest and 395, one of the most dangerous roads that you can travel on. So I think concern and public concern is very real, and any help that we can do to make that road safer, I think is, is good from the community. So, thanks, Skip.
I have just two small things. I have a plea to the parents of our community. We were very excited, you know, last meeting, or it was the last meeting or the meeting before, we got to announce that we had finished the installation of the softball dugout structures at the, at the two lower fields, and came to a message on Monday that they had already been tagged. I know that this world has a lot of challenges, and I know the parents have a lot of challenges out there, and I just want to commend those parents that are actively involved in protecting and teaching their children the right thing to do. And for those, if this is a young adult or even an adult that did it, you want a great community, it starts, it starts with yourself. It starts with your decisions and how you handle yourself, and making the decision to tag or making the decisions to do those things, they don't help anybody. We were able to clean it right up, but man alive, there's nothing worse than seeing, you know, us bringing something new and nice to this community and seeing it tagged within the first few weeks. Very disappointed with that, and thanks to our Parks and Rec Department for, for stepping up and quickly addressing it. The only other one was, I wanted to thank everyone who came out last night to our Penny Pool Town Hall discussion, number three. We had a great crowd out here. I think that everyone left here excited with the direction we're going with the pool. If you have not seen the presentation, it is available on our website. There's a kid splash, and it has Sergeant John Pennypool progress, and you can click there and find any other information you'd like. In regards to one of the speakers, Joe, I'd love to get some more information either through PD or through, I'm guessing it would be PD. I mean, I know that we've got abandoned RVs that have already started to show up on some of our streets. We were well aware of it, and I really think that he made a very valid point. I think we, I don't know that we can do much other than trying to advocate to get connections with the county forum in regards to how, I mean, it's, it's a crappy situation, not to put a pun on it, but the bottom line is, I get what the warehouse problem is in hazardous waste and things of that nature, trying to dispose of them so that then they can destroy something and get it off of our streets. And if we can offer assistance, Joe, I just want to let you know that your, your request didn't fall on deaf ears. We'll see what we can do in terms of connecting you with the county. I know, you know, even maybe if there's something we can do with, when it's picked up, taking it over to the fairgrounds where they have a dump location, and maybe making an arrangement to be able to get it dumped prior to arriving at the tow location, maybe we can do something to that effect. That was the first thought that came to my mind. But from terms of direction, just want to let you know that it didn't fall on deaf ears, and we'll see what we can do.
Tom?
I get excited when I see young adults showing interest in city matters and city issues, so there is still hope for our country. These young adults, they have interest, so I want to recognize Maverick for being here. Maverick is Mike Ferguson's grandson and Alyssa's son. Thank you for bringing him on most of the time. Really appreciate your time and your effort. Maverick, thank you so much for your interest in politics.
Good luck, Mayor. We're going to have a mascot. Maverick, one day we'll find a way to get you a little mascot costume. I like it. Okay. Next item is our consent calendar. All items listed on consent are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent items must may be approved by one motion if no member of the council wishes, or our audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anybody, I will get this right. The item will be removed from the consent calendar and will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council concerning the item before action is taken. There are five consent items this evening. The first item is proposed action to approve draft minutes of the Ridgecrest City Council regular meeting dated June 7th, 2023. The second is a resolution of the city council of the city of Ridgecrest to cooperate with the county of Kern, electing to participate in the Community Development Block grant and Home Investment Partnership Program for fiscal year '24, '25, and '26, and authorizing City Manager Ron Strand to sign the cooperative agreement. Number three is a proposed action to adopt a resolution of the Ridgecrest City Council and the Successory Development Agency adopting the annual budget for fiscal year '23, '24, establishing appropriations, estimating revenues, and establishing the policies by which the budget may be and shall be amended. Item number four is authorization for the City Manager Ron Strand to sign the notice of completion for the fiscal year '22. Measure V, Chip Seal Project authorized the city clerk to file the notice of completion and authorize city staff to release the retained amount of $61,344.52 to the contract payment coatings company within 30 days of recordation of the notice of completion. And item number five is a resolution of the city of Ridgecrest Council to adopt a road project list for fiscal year '23, '24, partially funded by SB 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. Does any member of the council wish to see an item pulled?
I would like to see item number three, proposed action to adopt a resolution of the Ridgecrest City Council and the Successory Development Agency adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year '23 and '24, establishing appropriations, estimating revenues, and establishing the policies by which the budget may be and shall be amended.
Item number three, is there any other item which would like to be pulled? Is there any member of the audience which would like an item pulled? Hearing none, item number three has been pulled. And we begin with, Ricky, you're going to have to help me. It's so often we have items sold, so we start with the discussion of the item and then come back to it, correct?
Normally, we will approve the other four.
Okay, and then pull that.
With the exception of three, and then approve that separately.
Okay. So with the other items, items one, two, four, and five, do I have a motion for approval on the consent calendar for those items?
So, move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and second. Roll call.
Mayor Bruin?
Aye.
Mr. Rajaradhan?
Aye.
Mr. Heyman?
Aye.
Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent, motion carries.
Okay, and now we'll begin our discussion. Item number three is the proposed action to adopt a resolution of the Ridgecrest City Council and the Successory Development Agency. This is our annual budget item. Thank you for joining us, Shree. You asked for the item to be pulled, Mr. Heyman? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. So yes, in regards to the budget, there's two items that I would like to see removed from the budget and then brought back to the council as separate agenda items so that we can discuss them and act on those items independently. One is the, in the police budget pertaining to the automatic license plate readers. I don't have the amounts in front of me tonight, but I believe it was $70,000, but, and the other item would be the use of Placer AI for the use of, I believe it's what, through the Economic Development Committee.
Yeah, Economic Development, yes.
And so, and I'd like that item to be brought back to, to the council for discussion, too.
So what your request is, Mr. Heyman, is, is for those items to be pulled for the purposes of discussion, do you want to discuss, you know, again, it would be a motion, an amended motion, for those items to be removed, approved by the council. Would you like to provide discussion or explanation for the pulling of the items for the fellow council members?
Sure. I don't, when it comes to the automated license plate readers, I've been doing my own research on it, and I've asked numerous members of the community whether or not they're in favor of the, of the license plate reader system. I've gotten a lot of responses back that people are not comfortable with it. There are those that are not comfortable with it, but see it as a benefit to the police department and, and helping the police department, which I tend to kind of hold that same view. Then are some that are just blatantly against it because they feel it's an overreach of privacy of citizens. So it's, it's a bit of a broad, you know, consensus from the, the folks that I have polled, but there's been a larger number of those that are, are not in favor of it. So I think it warrants further discussion.
Okay.
Same, and my own personal thoughts are, too, is whether or not the value of it is an economic value to the city, is the cost going to give us a, a, you know, reasonable return back? And the, in regards to the AI, Placer AI data, I voiced my, my opinions on previous councils where, yes, I believe that that information that we're looking at getting is benign in and of itself, but when you look at the overall picture of how people are being looked at and monitored, and, and I've said it before, most of it is in our phones, and so a lot of the data that these organizations are getting is, is from your phone. So if you want to be completely away from it, then you're going to have to give this up. I don't think we're fixing it by these actions alone, but I sure don't think we should be supporting it either. So, and I, again, I don't know that it's a cost-wise, is it a benefit? I mean, we can use that for Bosom Street, but do we need it? We could go down to Bosom Street, we had the first Bosom Street, and it was pretty straight that we were lacking on food and, and wine, and so it doesn't take artificial intelligence to, to figure that out. And so then on the second event, you know, it's, you know, we can go down and tell participation. So I don't think we need the, the status, you know, for what it's being purposed for. So that's my point of view at this point, and part of the basis as to why I'd like to see these two items pulled, have further discussion, have the public be able to weigh in on it, and then make a firm decision on it.
Yeah, and Mayor, if I may, China's one item, one issue here, just for clarity for the public as well as the council, the item for you is, is an approval of a budget for the upcoming year. The actual decision to purchase, for example, the license plate readers through a bidding process or contract or some other method of acquisition wouldn't be before the council sometime in the upcoming year. So with that information, I just wanted to make sure that, that everybody is clear.
So...
The answer today is just an approval of the budget. It's a budgetary allocation for the items that are listed in the budget.
Thank you for clarifying that, Martin. And so my question to you then is, if we don't pull it tonight, these two items will come back before the council, and we can make a decision to approve or not approve that, that item at a later date?
The contract for the license plate readers would have to come before the council for approval, before those are acquired, purchased, or, or, you know, you go out for proposals for.
Okay.
I assume that the same is true of the other item. I don't have that information in front of me, but excellent budget is basically approving the allocation of funds for future, other than obviously personnel and payroll where that money gets spent after the budget is approved and when, when the year starts. Any items, road repair, acquisition of, of property, for example, those items, all you're, all the council doing today is considering whether or not you want to earmark or set aside funds to do those things in the fiscal year of '23, '24. And as these things, our staff gets ready, they will...
Martin, we lost you on that last comment.
They'll, they'll come, they'll come to you for decisions as staff is ready and, and has the items prepared for you to consider. What's before you today is approval of the budget.
Okay.
And I think, Doc, part of what you're wanting is, is to ensure that these items come back for a council decision versus a staff decision. And I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to bounce around it, is we know Placer AI is below, that whatever that contract may or may not be, if it was signed, would be below City Manager Strand's purchase authorization, so we could do it without it coming back before the council. And I think, but what you're actually...
But a member of council could request that that is...
And I believe that's what you're saying, and that's what I'm trying to clarify.
We could review it if we wanted to do that.
Absolutely.
Correct?
Yeah. I'm just trying to clarify what you're...
With that being said, that, that satisfies my concerns at this point, and so I am good with this budget.
And what you're clearly stating is that if, if that decision is made, you'd like to have it as a full-fledged conversation amongst the council and the public.
Right.
And then be an amendment to, to the budget approval. It could be an amendment to the motion.
Yeah, it's actually not amending the budget or, or any of the proposed information because, again, that's not the spending of the dollars. You're just asking for it to make sure that... sure that those two, those two items which were discussed during the budget hearing come back to the council for a formal discussion and approval process.
Right.
That's correct.
Absolutely, sir.
Okay, so with that, I'm, my concerns are satisfied, and I just wanted to say to Sri that, you know, when, in regards to the budget, you've done a fantastic job, and we couldn't ask for any better, your work is phenomenal, so this has nothing to do with that. So, and with that, I will, I am in approval of the budget.
You're satisfied with it?
Yeah.
Okay, any other council questions in regards to item number three? Is there any public comment in regards to item number three?
So on the record, we're coming back to number three for a public discussion, Martin?
Yeah, I'm required on, item number three from the consent agenda was pulled, we have a council discussion, and then we're required to request public discussion.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
My name is Mike Sonat, thank you, Councilman Heyman. I appreciate the fact that you are taking the consideration seriously. I want to explain what I see happen here. The city of Tehachapi started using this software two years ago, he found out about it at ICSC. The, the ICSC is a commercial real estate convention in Las Vegas, and Tehachapi actually got an award from Kern Cog for implementing Placer AI. And I had the chance to stop in Tehachapi Monday night, meet the entire city council, city manager, the new police chief, the assistant city manager who was responsible for implementing this, and told them, same thing, basically, this is a serious invasion of privacy. I liken it to the equivalent of a warrantless search without physical checking. So, I don't think the city thought this through, city of Tehachapi or the city of Ridgecrest, and I know that the plan was, although, the plan was in motion to implement this software last year, along with Balsam Night Out. And the city, without any public comment, without any budget expenditure discussion, did all of this without public knowledge or public debate, other than a mere mention of Placer AI back in the January meeting. When Balsam Night Out was held, nobody knew that the city was monitoring the people that went to that affair in February.
I'm sorry, sir, but that's a blatant lie, we were not monitoring the people that were going there.
You're monitoring, I'm not gonna, excuse me, you're interrupting my public comment.
I understand that, but sir, the topic is regarding to the budget, and the budget is the topic right now.
You're monitoring people from, you know, you told us, we can see where they're walking for dinner, okay? How is that not monitoring?
The item of topic is the budget?
It's surveillance. Well, we're talking about pulling this from the budget, and I'm gonna explain why I don't trust you, because you've done this all surreptitiously. And, you know, if you want to debate, then hold it, hold it an agenda item and have some public debate. Same thing with annexation, how much money have you spent on annexation over the last two and a half years without public debate? So, don't give me this, you can't be trusted.
Waiting for your time. Thank you, sir. I'll go ahead and once again on the record, we don't have a contract with them, so how would we be doing it? As well, Mr. Heyman, did we not already agree to absolutely do as you requested?
Five minutes ago? Yes.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Sean Connolly, UFCW steward and wastewater operator for the city of Ridgecrest. Just want to talk a little bit about what's been going on. We had our openers earlier this year, and a big part of that was talks of doing a lot of restructuring and elevating of, I represent 18 different classifications for the city of Ridgecrest, you know, there's, we were supposed to do something for about 13 of those from what we had discussed, we ended up doing something for about five of those with this budget, I'm not trying to derail the budget or anything like that, just wanted the information to be out there, really, so that next year, July 2024, our contract expires, well, actually expires June 30th, and we will have a real negotiation. I represent a lot of unhappy people in the UFCW currently with how things have gone down. I was waiting for a meeting for quite a while, I don't know if the miscommunication was from my union or city staff, but it just didn't happen until yesterday, and basically I had to go with the information I received in an email, and it kind of lit some fires amongst some people that were, they had their hopes brought up quite a bit, you know, we, I personally went out and supported Measure P, hung door knockers, spoke to people, I recruited a bunch of people from the union, and I won't say a bunch, a handful of people from the union to do the same. And, you know, we've been hearing like, hey, we're gonna do big things with this, we're gonna do big things, and I think there's, you know, like I said, there's just some unhappy people about what actually has transpired with this new budget, they were expecting much bigger things, they were told of much bigger things that would happen, it was walked back quite a bit, and I'm just looking forward to next year with this real negotiation, and we're having to set a new contract, however many years that goes for, I'm really looking for your guys' support to just do something for these people. I mean, a lot of these guys are making 17, 18 bucks an hour, they have families, they go out and work hard every day, out there in the streets, parks, community dev technicians running the desk over here for the building department, I mean, I represent quite a few people, the engineers, all the wastewater guys, I just want to see them taken care of, and I hope you guys will really, really support me next year in getting that done. I'd appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Any other public comment in regards to item number three? Okay, see none, we'll bring it back to council. Do we have a motion for approval of item number three, proposed action to adopt a resolution of the Ridgecrest City Council and the successor development agency adopting the annual budget for fiscal year 23, 24?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and second, roll call.
Mayor Bruin?
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam?
Aye.
Mr. Heyman?
Aye.
Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
We have four ayes, one absent, motion carries.
Thanks, Sri. Next item is item number six, item number six is a request from the Ridgecrest Area Convention and Visitors Bureau for council's adoption of a resolution of intention to renew the Ridgecrest Tourism Improvement District, TBID, for 22, 23 to 2033, and set public hearings for renewal of the TBID and sunsetting of the existing one. Mr. Strand?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and start this out. In June, we received a letter from the Ridgecrest Visitors Bureau asking to renew their Ridgecrest Tourism Improvement District. We took a look at their request, now they've had a district that has been formed since 2012, the city updated it in 2017, it expires in 2027, however, they're requesting to increase the TBID from 3% to 5 and 3/4% for seeking additional funding to help increase their efforts to bring people into town for our local hotels. Now, we had our attorney, Martin, took a look at the document and said that it was legally sound. Tonight is just the resolution approving the renewal, the intent to start the process, the process has two public meetings, one, the final meeting, where we actually have the vote of the hotels in town based upon the dollar amount that they bring in revenues. We have us, with us tonight is Carrie Crutcher, the CEO of the Ridgecrest Visitors Bureau, she'll be making a presentation on what their plan is, and so you guys can get an idea. So, Carrie, if you want to get started.
Thank you, city manager Strand and council members. I always love to take the opportunity to talk about the important work that we're doing with city council, and so I have a brief presentation, excuse me, to talk about our plans with the assessment increase, but first I kind of want to just recap and talk about the scope of what the RACVB does. Councilman Gorman, I don't think I've been able to present since you've been on board, and so I just want to take a minute to do that. In respect of everyone's time, I'm gonna scan over several of the slides that I have prepared and just get to the question and answer part, I think that's where we'll get to the meat of things. So, and let me preface this, I interchange the acronym TBID and RTID. TBID is Tourism Business Improvement District. RTID stands for Ridgecrest Tourism Improvement District. So if you hear me say both, I apologize, don't be confused, it's a habit I need to break, and I just can't seem to, so here we go. Uh-uh, sorry, I do that every time. Okay, so just talking about the scope of the RACVB, the, we manage the Ridgecrest Regional Film Commission, in which we have an MOU with BLM, we permit all of the public land for BLM. We produce marketing materials, participate in events and programs in the film industry in the LA area, all to increase filming in our region and increase hotel stays. The RACVB manages the sports commission, and in that, we create and attract sporting events that bring participants to the area. We produce events and conferences, a few of our signature events are the Ridgecrest Petroglyph Festival. I'm happy to announce that we are creating a standalone high desert, or California desert classic car show event, we used to do that in conjunction with the Petroglyph Festival, but it's now appropriate, appropriate to separate the two and have that be a standalone event that we will grow into a two-day event, which will bring visitors to the valley. And then our CCAP Industry Days that we do in conjunction with the base. We also do digital marketing, creating visibility of Ridgecrest through, you know, digital means and then tourism, and we continue to maintain and really nurture the relationship with the state of California through the California Welcome Center and through Visit California. Visit California is the state office of tourism, and they're the entity that sponsors the California Welcome Center, and that's really an important relationship for the future of tourism. So that shows really the scope of what the RACV does, we, I like to say we're small but mighty, we do a lot, and this proposed increase in assessment will really enable us to reach some of those goals and opportunities that we're faced with. Like I said, in our marketing efforts, the main thing that we do is to just generate awareness of Ridgecrest to the outside world, and as we're aware, tourism is a significant and really one of the main, outside of what defends the main economic drivers in our valley, and so in support of hotels, restaurants, other food outlets, transportation, fuel, et cetera, those are all, you know, sectors that are affected by tourism. So the question that I've been answering for the last month or so is what do you plan to do with the increase in your budget? And so I'm gonna talk about the priority, and then we're gonna get to numbers in a minute, but the first priority is to increase sporting events. And I'll tell you, during, in 2020, when the world was shut down, we in Ridgecrest had the opportunity to, we kind of were allowing softball tournaments to take place during that time, and people were coming from Lancaster to even Nevada because it was important that their kids continue in their activities. And so, because there was not much activity in the hotels at that time, we really were able to measure how those tournaments were affecting our economy, and we were able to determine that one softball tournament, hosting 16 teams, a two-day event would bring approximately $45,000 in community spend to Ridgecrest. And so, in that, and in our other research over the last few years, we are able to tell that youth sports and off-road events, and also rodeo is something that we're starting to focus on, these events are, will seriously move the needle in occupancy and in community spending. This, the second thing that we plan to do priority-wise is to increase our presence in the film industry. This is something that's very much, we can move the needle on this, and really, all it takes is a little more focus on being constantly in the awareness of location professionals, and that's something that we can really do, again, with the increase of this assessment. These are the ones that I'm going to pass through, these slides are available to you, and the ones that I'm passing over really just focus on the impact of tourism, but it's more statewide and countywide, and so we can, I'll just let you look into that, and I'm happy to answer any questions for you in that regard. So, I spoke earlier about increasing the geographical awareness of Ridgecrest and of our valley, and so really, an efficient way to do that is to work on reciprocal marketing efforts with Mammoth Lakes and Death Valley, and already we're seeing the needle move on that a little bit through the Welcome Center, Mammoth has a Welcome Center, and so now that we're in the same network, we've had discussions on how to do cooperative marketing agreements and really leverage our geographical proximity to Mammoth, and again, something that's very easily attainable with this increase. So, again, talking about priority, and really, this is more of a timing issue, the reason I'm standing here tonight requesting the sunset of the current management plan district and the renewal of the new one is because we're well aware of the construction efforts on the base, and we've been told by base leadership that the peak construction personnel, workforce peak will take place in June of 2023, and that's exactly where we are. And what we did was, we took occupancy numbers from 2018 and put them against our current occupancy numbers, and so we're accounting for about a 5% increase in occupancy, and we're, and that has contributed to the construction efforts on the base. And so as the construction projects are wrapping up, we will start to see a decline in that, the construction workforce. And so the plan here, am I doing something to make that popping sound? Sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, now it threw off my flow. Our increase, starting to get into the numbers, this increase over the next three years will increase occupancy 4.7%, so that, and that is weekday occupancy, that doesn't account for the weekend events that will take place, so it basically will completely backfill that decline in the construction occupancy that we're gonna see. I'm gonna get to the end. And then just touching again on the relationship with Visit California, it's very, it's a crucial one, and it's important, and there's a lot of opportunity there in growing our regional geographical awareness, and this slide just shows the Ridgecrest portion, which is now featured on the state of California website, and we see a significant amount of online traffic to that, that website. So, here we go. So here we go, numbers. Okay. So here on this pie chart is percentage-wise how we plan to utilize the increase, the budget increase. And I had talked about the sports marketing and the events growth. We anticipate that per month over the next three years, strictly on the increase that we plan to promote events, that will bring in roughly $300,000 annually in revenue strictly on weekends through the events. And then secondarily, I talked about the film marketing, we plan to increase that budget by 10%. And through those efforts, we estimate an increase of 1,000 room nights per year. And I'll say film crews will pay top dollar for hotel rooms. And so it's just another excellent market to tap into. So, but like I said, 1,000 room nights per year and then roughly $150,000 in revenue annually. And then lastly, we have plans to increase our analytics and data research so that we can, I take this very seriously and I really plan to implement accountability and responsibility and transparency and we'll be able to do that through those means. And here's what we do, work, work toward a prosperous future. The RACVB in the city has built a great partnership and I look forward to continuing that partnership and the growth in tourism as the city is continuing, continuing that growth in the valley. So that pretty much concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
I know I have some, but I'm going to let everyone else start at the same time. I'll go ahead and Solomon, I'm going to let you be the first off.
First, I want to say Kerry, you have been doing a good job and good presentation. So thank you so much for giving us all the details. A couple of clarifications. So this is already approved by RACVB Board, right?
Right. So this obviously is a legal process and there's a very stringent process that we've had to follow. And so the first step was to get the approval of the RACVB Board. Let me tell you that the RACVB Board of Directors is made up of, it's a group of seven. Four of them were required to have four hotel owners or general managers on the board, one restaurant owner, one city staff or city councilman, councilperson, and then one general member of the, of the public. So we have a majority of hotels on our board. They approved it. Then the next step for me was to petition the hotel owners and I, we were required to get 51% signature approval on the petition to even broach this with council. And I got 89% of hotel approval on this effort. So the hotels are very much in support of it. And the other 11% that we didn't get really just boiled down to not being able to contact the owners. They're out of country, out of state, you know, more investment type properties, but the hotels that are local and invested in the community support this and I submitted those petitions to the city.
Thank you. Yeah. I don't have any problem with increasing this to 5.75. So on the other side, I have a couple of questions for the staff. So Mr. Strand, you said there won't be any fiscal impact, but we get 3% commission, right?
Yes.
So that is a fiscal impact on our budget.
Yes, it'll be a slight increase in revenue, correct, for processing all of that information and conducting the audits.
Around 30,000, something like that is expected, I think.
Correct. Yeah, we, what finance does is they collect it, then we audit it. We're, we are the entity that actually, that the process actually flows through. Without us, there, it'd be difficult for them legally to be able to collect this funding so we have to do it for them. And we do it during our, our collection of the TOT fee.
So we have been collecting that previous years also?
Correct.
Okay. So is this shown in the budget, Sheri, do you know? Okay, good. Thank you.
No, we won't, we won't show an increase until next year if there, if there is any.
On the resolution, couple of things.
Mr. Rajaratnam, before you go to that, one of the things in the staff report was that Kerry was going to give us new dates. This resolution is from the original one that she put in, so she needs to give us new dates so we are aware the dates are wrong in this. So if Kerry wants to give us the new dates.
Yep. In one paragraph, Rick, I think in the, in the first word as, it describes June 7th as a hearing date and obviously today is June 21st. So I believe that needs to be changed.
Yeah, that's not what I'm going to ask though.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so if you see now therefore, item four, you said the final public hearing be lawfully noticed and scheduled for August 19th, which is a Saturday. I think it should be August 16th.
That is correct, sir. I have that correction.
Okay.
And, and that's my mistake, I apologize.
No, no, no.
And one more.
I do mistakes too, so don't worry about that.
There's one more in the last line also.
Last line, right? June 21st.
I have all three of those.
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you, I appreciate it.
Man, that's all I have for the time being.
Thank you. Doc?
I don't have any questions.
Skip?
No.
Okay.
No questions.
No questions. So first thing to make sure everyone remembers is this is going to go through a process and the process, this is the kickoff, there will be another public meeting, there'll be another process. So this is not a one and done, this is a open process for communication.
Would it be helpful if I just ran through the process quickly?
Sure.
Or, I mean, is that, okay. So really today starts the clock on this process and there's very strict timing that we must abide by. And so today was me presenting the intention to the city council and then, and this is a date, Rick, another date that we're going to have to change. On Monday, June 26th, we're required to send out notices to the, again, to all of the hotel owners explaining the intention and what's going on. That then gives them a 45-day window to petition this if they do not agree, which honestly I don't anticipate because 89% have already petitioned in support of it, but still we're required to give them that 45-day window. July 19th will be a public meeting in which the council allows public testimony on the renewal of the RTID. And then August 16th is the final public hearing in which council would actually take action. And then that would pretty much end it and, you know, end the process. And then from there, we anticipate that the assessment would actually start. The increase would take place October 1, which is the beginning of the RACVB fiscal year. And then the RACVB would receive the revenue from that in the appropriate timeline. So that's the process.
And may, if I just may clarify one single thing that was said by, by the speaker, it's not a petition, it's simply a vote. It's very similar to Prop 218. The affected hotel owners have the opportunity to vote either in favor or not in favor of the change.
So it's an actual vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
No, that's, that's good to know. So the, the pieces that we were provided is they're, they're essentially their acclimation to going forward to this process and then they still have another opportunity to potentially vote to change their mind accordingly.
Yes, yes.
And, and if a majority vote is against the, the increase, then the council does not have the authority to install it.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Martin. Skip, you have any questions? I thought, I already asked you, didn't I? I'm sorry, it was on me. We, we started and that was there. I want to, I want to preface one of the, the thoughts with this is a tourism district, you know, again, it's designed to support the tourism objectives of the community through a third party, as in RACVB, by specifically applying an additional cost basis to the rooms. So this is not going to translate down to your restaurants, to your grocery shopping, to anything else like that. It doesn't get to anywhere there. It gets to RACVB. RACVB then, its mission and its purpose and its board, its goals are to bring more people to visit Ridgecrest so that therefore our heads and beds, if you haven't heard that term for the public that's out there, those are people, you know, think about heads and beds, it makes pretty simple sense. It's the number of rooms that are filled and we know that if we go back to, you know, pre-COVID and pre-earthquakes and pre the, the incredible surge of growth that we've been able to experience from this, you know, we know what our heads and beds numbers were looking like and we know that we were able to support our hotel industry from that, but the, but the fact is that we also know that we believe there's going to be this decline when the construction comes closer and closer to its end. And that decline probably isn't going to be in Monday through Friday, but that decline is probably going to be more into the Saturdays, Friday nights and Saturday nights, I'm guessing are, are what you would define as weekend nights.
Right.
Yeah. And that's, how do we make sure that we maintain the volume of heads and beds across an entire seven-week period, seven-day period? And one of the big things is to bring people into the town for events and, and recreational. Now recreation for Ridgecrest should be a big part of our bread and butter and I don't think we've ever fully exploited it for what it's worth. I was three years old when I first visited Ridgecrest in a baby crib because my dad was riding motorbikes. I didn't know I was visiting my future home, but just happened to be. And the simple fact is that we have a beautiful area that is 90 minutes from multiple outdoor and geographical recreational activities. And now it's about marketing ourselves that way through a process that assesses on, not directly on our citizens, but on our people visiting our community and staying in our hotel rooms. So it's really important to understand what our goals here are because people get wrapped up in the tax conversation, go off on all their own crazy conspiracy theories. But the simple fact is that what we're doing is we are assessing a change to the rate that's charged for guest staying in our hotels in order to provide additional revenue to the primary entity in charge of tourism and marketing efforts for the Ridgecrest community as a whole. Did I encapsulate that properly?
Absolutely.
Great. And I want to make sure I cleared that because I wanted to talk in common terms for some people to understand. This is a not, this is not hitting your direct wallet. Now, when my parents come to visit, yeah, it's going to hit their wallets. Perfect, don't mind. When my brother comes to visit, he can pay for it. But the simple fact is that it's not going to affect us on a day-to-day citizen basis.
Not negatively.
Huh?
Not negatively.
Not negatively. I mean, the one risk is that you put yourself and you price yourself out of the marketplace and that's one other thing I wanted to discuss is, while a lot of people don't know that, you know, there has been a continuing effort and I've been very proud to be part of it, to make sure that our per diem rate is accurate to what our costs are for our hoteliers. And I see many of our hoteliers here and they've been partners in this process and we thank them for all of their help and work and support. But the simple fact is that we've always been undervalued in our cost basis as well for what a night stay was and what, what the cost to visit is. And the simple fact is that this type of assessment in broad strokes is everywhere else in California, but once again, not within Ridgecrest because we continue to undervalue ourselves. This allows us to value ourselves in a way that provides us the funds to market the community more effectively into our future. Now, one to be, one thing to be clear is you're looking at an increase of, my guess is about, you know, from 500 to 560,000 dollars a year to your operating budget, correct?
Based on our current budget and our current projections, yes.
Okay. And I'm going to hardhead a couple small questions that I think just help with perspective. When you opened the California Welcome Center and the amount of investment that RACVB had to put into that in terms of now its operating costs of the space, things like that, how much support do you get from the state in regards to that?
As far as financial support goes, zero.
Okay. I want to make sure that's really clearly stated on the record. California State does not come out and help us market our community, even though we've invested in the California Welcome Center and being part of their network of chain of, of publications. Their only assistance is to keep us on their marketing radar, but in terms of actual physical dollars to run the location, provide the staffing, make sure that the equipment's working, make sure that everything looks pretty, all of the displays, all that, none of that is fiscally being generated or provided by the state.
That's correct.
Second is the impact to the RACVB budget prior to the Welcome Center, how significant has the Welcome Center's impact been on your ability to operate under the existing funds?
Can you rephrase the question?
How tight is your budget?
I want to be sure I understand. Well, our administrative costs have gone up and so because of that, and we realize, we, we all are aware of the importance of the Welcome Center, but it did increase our administrative costs in operating it, which meant it cut into our advertising budget. And so, does that answer the question?
Yeah, you're getting the right route. Is it, you had, you had to rob Peter to pay Paul?
Hmm.
A little bit.
Yeah.
You had to steal from advertising.
Absolutely.
Or from other marketing efforts.
Right.
In order to provide the Welcome Center.
Yes.
Which was a fantastic marketing direction for, for the city and, and I'm fully in support of it, don't get me wrong. I'm simply saying that when we, we added resources, we didn't adjust our costs, our revenue generation.
Exactly.
And that's what's at stake here is we're actually changing the revenue generation in response to what we've continued to add and grow on to our, our RACVB community offerings and now this is an additional, I mean, I hate to keep using the same terms, but the community has to hear it. You know, you can't drive a car with no fuel in it and, and I'm sorry, but revenue is fuel. And if RACVB is going to drive us in terms of making sure the heads are in beds and people are coming out here for softball tournaments and dirt bike tournaments and all the other things that we want to see in our community, we have to make sure there's enough fuel in the tank. And, and if you go out and you buy a great big old Welcome Center, not being sarcastic, but you had to pull fuel from other places in order to keep things running and if we want to see our marketing and advertising and all those other things refocused for Ridgecrest, we're going to have to add fuel.
Yes.
And, and I'm just trying to dumb it down a little bit. I don't got Kyle here to do, to do half of this work for me, so. It's just making sure that the community understands that what we're doing is not hitting them. This is about making sure that we can promote that tourism aspect to get people to visit our community. And I got to tell you, quite honestly, we have an incredible base, we have an incredible community, but adding tourism or enhancing tourism and all of the things that from a recreational hub perspective are, are very good for Ridgecrest in the long run, okay? Because I've said before, tearing down the secret walls and secret city walls, the more that we have people that learn and understand what a unique gem we are in the community, we will see other things that come with it as positive growth, so. You have my support. I'm going to give you my one caveat. My one caveat is if RACVB is carrying any debt, which I fully understand your business decisions, especially during COVID, if you had to make any of those choices, I fully respect those. I think it's important that RACVB respect the, the tourism dollars that are coming in and work to eliminate any debt carrying on the business, on, on the organization. And with that, I don't have any other comments and I will allow for any public comment. Is there any public comment from the floor?
What's the advertisement?
Oh, please come on right up to the podium, we have to, otherwise YouTube can't hear you, sir. No problems. And if you'd say your name for the record, please.
Kyle Benson.
Please, sir.
What type of advertisement are we, we talking about with this increase? What, what, are we talking mail flyers, commercials? How are we going to attract more people to Ridgecrest?
So, I'll just stand.
Why don't I, Kerry, why don't you come right up here, if you don't mind? Just that way you can be able to respond into the microphone so YouTube can catch it.
Right here is a, is it on? Okay. Frequently Asked Questions flyer, I encourage you to grab one, it's, it clarifies some questions. So the marketing that we currently do, or as we, as we plan for this increase, sorry, I can't see you, I want to look at you.
You're all right.
Oh yeah, good idea. Sorry. Traditional forms of advertising are, are very expensive, so like commercials. We have learned a few ways to kind of get the biggest bang, bang for our buck, but, you know, radio spots, mail, is it really that efficient anymore? Like, and we have so many challenges. Mayor Bruin made a reference to the secret city. When our city was formed, we were meant to be a secret. And fast forward, what, 60, 80 years, whatever it is, now we want to tell the world and we have we have we face so many challenges. So part of the challenge is determining the appropriate platforms to advertise, how to leverage, like I talked about cooperative opportunities with Mammoth, with Death Valley, with those types of things. So if we can partner with communities that already have a gigantic following, Mammoth has like a million people on, you know, followers on social media. If we can partner with those, partner with Death Valley, which we do, this will enable us to increase that. They already have a steady audience, they have a steady budget. And so we really are looking towards being strategic in that and leveraging those those relationships as much as possible. But we do have plans really for TV and increasing billboards, increasing social media, and then increasing traffic to our website. And the way we do that is in, like, link, I'm not a web person, but I'll say, yeah, like linking, like, if you're looking for hotels in Death Valley, then Stain Ridgecrest pops up, like those types of things. And so those are really the main ways that we will advertise, but it's very much going to be connecting us to existing well-known destinations. Mayor said we're the hub of activity. We're also the hub of tourism. We're very central, Mammoth, Death Valley, Sequoias, Yosemite. So just really leveraging those relationships and then also kind of delving into the realm of traditional advertising, like you said.
Well, thank you for that. One other question. Would the council consider a locality stipulation so individuals who live in Ridgecrest wouldn't have to pay this increase? I know other cities do have something similar to that. I believe that, I can't remember, there's some city in LA that if you're a local, you don't have to pay the extra fees that may incentivize the community more. Personally, I think it's a tremendous idea. I we have not tapped into our full tourism potential. We have amazing off-roading, amazing writing, an amazing community. And so it's an amazing idea. I think if we could do a locality stipulation, so if you're a local and your house is flooded and you have to go out and rent a hotel, it's not going to hit the wallet quite as hard, just just something to consider, but that's all. Thank you.
I haven't heard of it before, but we'll ask some questions. Thank you. Do you happen to know the locality that has it?
I can't remember.
Okay. Okay, thank you, sir.
And Mayor, if I may.
Yes, sir.
On that particular question, the city is merely administrator of the money that has been collected and obviously the authorizing body for the increase and for the creation of the new RTID. But I think the decision to who collect from and who not to collect from would rest with the hotel owners.
I also believe there may be an issue with the street and highways code in doing that. I don't know if you can pick and choose, it's similar to 218. We can't offer discounts on certain classes of individuals, it also becomes very problematic. So while it may be a good idea to have a locality thing, I don't think it passes the legal sniff test.
I think multiple states have, I think Nevada has spring observations that members get in cheaper. I mean, if you live in Los Angeles, I mean, it may be a California.
The problem is we're in California.
Yeah, I appreciate it, but if we could have Nevada laws in California, it would be a lot of things differently.
And I'll just say, on a rate, a room with a rate of 189 a night, which is a higher rate for our our market, this increase is $5. So it's really negligible when you look at it that way. Overall, over the year, it's it's substantial, but I think the California code, I don't think it allows for that. We can check that.
Thank you. No problem. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Thank you. Mike Sonoff. I've had a lot of fun writing about the sign on 395, and I wanted to tell you that I love the sign, the colors. I came around the corner the other day, and it's like, oh, that's looks so nice. And every time I do that, I think I should let you know, you know, that sign's been through a lot of abuse by me. But one of the first things I did when I started getting a little active in in this town was was about eight years ago, when former Mayor Breeden sprung her annexation plan. And I immediately worked on an alternative idea, which was called Four Projects. And one of the first things I did was go to the RACV meet, RACV B meeting, and I asked all the people that were at that board meeting, what was the, what was their idea of Ridgecrest's main entrance? And about half the room thought of Inyo Kern Road, and the other half the room thought China Lake Boulevard, South China Lake Boulevard. And I think, you know, Inyo Kern Road is obviously, it's from Inyo Kern, it's got the airport, there's traffic coming in from 14. But 395 offers a, and South China Lake Boulevard offers a nice opportunity for a gateway corridor. And one of the things that that the real estate industry is well aware of is you want to have a clean front doorstep, you know, first impressions matter. And one of the things that I was so disappointed about during the earthquakes and all these TV trucks came into town was the fact that our South China Lake Boulevard looked like a mess. And it doesn't need to. I mean, it, I have some wonderful ideas on how to beautify that that section all the way in from 395. And one part of it was to build a nice big shade cabana out on 395 at the BLM campground. And and maybe we could, we could get Councilman Gorman to construct a 50-foot hall, 50-foot tall cachina and put it out there next to the cabana. And people would go, wow, what's that cachina all about? And that would be our our signal that, hey, there's something up here. And we could have a, you know, an interpretive center of some sort of a cabana interpretive signs and say, here's Ridgecrest. And as they come into Ridgecrest, from the White Star Mine, I envisioned bike paths, walking paths, some some mesquite trees planted that are, you know, that grow without water pretty much, desert willow along South China Lake Boulevard coming in from the water tank south. So I saw, and I also saw a lot of opportunities to develop the the trailheads into the BLM and the Rota Makers with cabanas and and an OHV trail system through town. So I hope you, I hope you, because to me, tourism is a big, big benefit to this town. And one of the things I've done is tried to promote all of the the campgrounds and the things around us, including Death Valley and Bishop and Kern River Valley. And the, I was up at the Red Rock Canyon here recently, the Red Rock Canyon Campground State Park, and they have a nice, you know, tourist center there with brochures. And California City had a nice brochure at the, on the brochure rack, but Ridgecrest didn't. So I got one of those and dropped it by the Welcome Center. I hope you saw that.
I did. They passed it to me.
So anyway, that's a, that's a really good idea. As far as tying in, there's a, there's actually a gal that that does that for a living, travels around and fills these racks up. So I don't know how to get in touch with her, but that would be a really good thing. So, nice job on the sign on 395.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment from the floor? Okay, I believe we have one caller on the phone. Caller, go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Hector Lopez, a small business owner in Ridgecrest, and we have a couple of Airbnbs that we operate. You know, from the looks of it and hearing what you're saying, doesn't sound bad at all. Really agree with everything that's been going on, and we've been benefited with, you know, the earthquake tendency from film crews all the way up to construction crews. So that's been good. I don't think the problem currently is bringing people in, but more than anything, it's keeping people returning. I think there's a lot of code enforcement that needs to happen. I think the city is somewhat failing. You can drive around neighborhoods and you can see all the destruction going on. It doesn't look clean, it gives a bad aspect. Is there any plans on benefiting on that end?
I don't believe that it would fall within the purview of the RACV B. I, huh?
Yeah, not to the, not nothing them, from the city itself, from the, from the police department or from you guys, the city council. Is there any plans on using any other type of funds, whether it be from the POT or anything else, to do more code enforcement?
So, Mr. Lopez, I will be happy to have an offline conversation with you because it wouldn't fall within the agendized rules that we have to follow under the Brown Act because that's a topic that's not agendized and in the process of discussion. It would have fallen under the public comment section earlier. But if you'd like to, again, my email can be easily found, it's ebruin@richcrest-ca.gov, and it's online, it's through the website. If you want to send me an email and have a conversation offline, I'll be happy to to talk with you about some of what we're working on and and hear some of your concerns in regards specifically to code enforcement. But for this time, we're just specifically addressing the TID proposal as it relates to RACV B.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. And I believe we have another caller?
Yes.
Caller, go ahead.
Yes. For the last five weeks, I've traveled past that sign heading north into Ridgecrest, the one that's just south of town on 395. And I really sincerely can't tell what it's advertising. You're usually going through there being pushed by traffic around 5:00 PM coming back into town at about 65 miles an hour, and you've got literally two seconds to read it. I don't know what it says. I honestly cannot read that sign. So tell me what it says.
I believe it says, well, it says, big, big city brands, small town charm is the copy on the the big part. And then I'm sorry, I, I believe it says like Ridgecrest next right or something like that on the side. We have plans to update the graphics on that billboard. We've held off because we would like to increase the billboard situation on the highways and and to have it be a cohesive campaign. And so, excuse me, I hear lots of feedback about this. Some love it, obviously, some hate it, you know, so. But we face some challenges with what to put on that billboard, but currently that's that's what it says.
Well, you might as well say oatmeal capital of the world because it's not a great location for a sign because people are really fighting traffic through there. That's a, if you drive through there, you're coming down that hill, there's big trucks behind you, and you've got a split second glance and before you you're doing something dangerous like looking away from the road. I think it's a real poor location. It should be somewhere sooner on a long stretch, you know, but it's not a great location because it's a curve.
I appreciate your comments. Unfortunately, BLM tells us where we have to put certain things.
All right. Well, as far as I'm concerned, I could say that we're the oatmeal capital of the world. The other thought real quick for tourism is I always roll through my head, a father of four in Bakersfield, and he asks his kids for the coming weekend, you've got two choices where you can go, where we can go for a visit. Ridgecrest, which is desert and rocks, or we can go to Magic Mountain. Which, where do you want to go, kids?
Got motorcycles in 18 years or not?
Yeah, I don't know how to respond to that, sir.
Well, that's just it. I'd rather see our money go into improving the roads around here. My street is turning to gravel. You let some company called Race come in and tear up my street additionally.
So, sir, I'm going to go back to what I said to Mr. Lopez. We're just discussing any of the items, if there's an actual complaint in regards to the roads or Race or any of those, we'll be happy to address those, but it's not in line with the agendized item, which we're discussing, which is the increase to TBID.
You guys are funny. Take care, have fun. Bye.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I don't see any other callers on the phone. Once again, the phone number is on. There it is. I'll give a few seconds if there's anybody else who'd like to call in or comment. Okay. Thank you very much, and we'll go ahead and bring it back to council for any other comments or questions. I was going to share something, I know, it was just off. Go ahead with it, Riley. I tried to give that extra few seconds.
Just off.
It was dropped? Okay. Caller, go ahead.
Hi.
Hello, go ahead, caller. If you can mute your television background, that would be helpful.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Bruin, this is. Sorry. There we go. Is that better?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Hi, good evening. This is Mallory Boyd. Good evening, Mayor Bruin. Thank you, Carrie. Great presentation. I just had a quick question. I've noticed around the state, like off the freeways in particular, they have these, look like state sanctioned signs that have small panels that have advertising potential for particular businesses in the area. Is that something that we might be able to capitalize on in the future?
I can answer that question, Mallory. In fact, we can't. It's a violation of the California Vehicle Code. We checked with District Nine and Caltrans, addressed it all the way up to our assembly person and senator, and the only way we could possibly put a sign out there on the freeway would be to have a change in the law. So we've looked at that extensively about over the last couple of years.
Okay. That's a shame because since we have so many big city businesses now in town, it would be nice to find a way to get advertised from them on the highway.
Yeah, I agree, but we hit a very solid three-foot block wall.
Yeah, I'm sorry to hear that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mallory. Okay, so we'll once again bring it back to council. What I was going to mention is funny because it plays right into line with Caltrans, is I was driving home from Las Vegas last week, and, you know, I'm on Highway 58 and getting ready to make the turn at Kramer. And it always frustrates me that that what is the cities that it shows as your target cities, right? And it shows Bishop, and it shows Mammoth. And I think to myself, why? Why is it that Ridgecrest never shows up on any of the signs if I'm going through an area? You know, why, why does Bishop show up before Ridgecrest shows up? Is it the number of miles before this the city is? Is it the distance? Is it the name reputation? No, and I know, and I know what, this is not. But my point to everyone is, is we have, we have a lot of hurdles to cross to build Ridgecrest as a reputational destination. We've got a lot, a lot of work to do if we ever want to crack that nut. And and the simple fact is that this is a starting point, and the more that we're investing in our own tourism and promotion and those types of things, it'll be better for the city in the long run. I just was funny that the sign should come up right as I was starting to say, I, one of the first things I thought was, damn it, how do I get Bishop off and put Ridgecrest on? Was one of those thoughts, driving through the middle of the night, and Mayor thought so.
We're simply just too far off the highway before our city limit sign starts.
Yeah.
But if we annexed out to 395, that could change.
We could change that.
Correct.
Okay, that certainly sounds like another good reason. Okay. Any other council final comments?
Nope.
Nope? Okay. Thank you, Carrie, for your time. I appreciate it. And so what we have in front of us is a, the resolution with the two amended changes. Do I have a motion for approval of the resolution as presented with the changes to August 16th and June 21st?
So amon.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mayor Bruin?
Aye.
Mr. Raj Ratnam?
Aye.
Mr. Hayner?
Aye.
Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
Four ayes, one abstent, Mr. Blades. Motion does carry.
Mayor Bruin?
Aye.
Mr. Raj Ratnam?
Aye.
Mr. Hayner?
Aye.
Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent, Mr. Blades, motion does carry.
Thank you very much, and, uh, we'll look forward to an additional discussion in August. Or July.
July.
July next. Okay. Next item on our agenda is item number seven. This is a resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2324 rate adjustment request for solid waste ser, waste services. I don't see Megan, so are you presenting it?
Yeah, it's mine.
Okay.
Yeah, she's, uh, she's off at a economic development conference for a couple of days that, uh, we had an opportunity to send her to, so we sent her, so this falls into my lap. Uh, so what we have before you tonight is a, uh, resolution approving a rate adjustment request for solid waste services with Waste Management. Uh, a little bit of history, back in 2012, we entered an agreement with Waste Management. As part of that agreement, we had, um, language in, in the agreement that allowed for rate increases due to certain, uh, uh, operational factor increases. In, uh, 2018, when we renegotiated our contract, we renegotiated how that escalation formula, uh, is to be determined. When we did that, we had HFNH, which is a, our consultant, uh, that assists us in, in the language or assists us in, uh, our development of the contract and these follow-on contracts. We felt then and we feel now that the, that the metrics we use to determine those, uh, C P I, those rate increases are, uh, fair to both sides, both the city and, uh, Waste Management. As you know, in 2022, we reinstated our contract with Waste Management. Uh, so March of every year, uh, based upon their operating factors, um, Waste Management, uh, can put in a rate request. Uh, that rate request takes in factors such as, uh, labor costs, fuel and, uh, C P I. So that formula this year, with all of the, the significant increases in fuel and the C P I, uh, the increase was, uh, 9.1% uh, in accordance to the formula. We did put safe stops in the contract, which, um, allowed for, the, the rate would not decrease, it couldn't go below zero, nor could it go above 6% in any one year. If it went below 1% or above 6%, that could be, uh, moved to the following year for consideration. So in this case here, even though the costs are at 91, 9.1%, by contract, they're only eligible for a 6% increase in, uh, in rates. And so we've taken a look at the, at the matrix that, that, um, garnered this and, uh, everything was correct. So what we're looking at is a 6% increase effective July 1st and what that means to the customers. For residential customers, you're looking at for a 35 gallon cart service, you're looking at a dollar 21 a month increase, up to a dollar 52 a month increase for the 95 gallon cart. Uh, then a commercial for, uh, a three yard, once a week pickup, it'd be an increase of, uh, $15.77 from 257 to 273. So my recommendation is for council to, um, approve this rate increase. My understanding of the contract is, is that we come to council just to verify the fact is, is that we've checked our numbers, made sure that it was appropriate. Uh, and then council obviously sets the, the maximum rate, uh, for trash services. So with that, if you have any questions.
Thank you, sir. Um, I'm going to go ahead and be the lead on this one to start, just. I, I mean, we are, we, we are up here, guys. We're well aware, it's been an entertaining 12 months of trash, okay? Let's not sugarcoat it, let's not try to put any, you know, sweet spots on this, it's, it's a fact. But it's also a fact that everyone nationwide has seen over the last 12 months absolutely inflationary costs across the board, right? You've seen it in your, in your wallet, you've seen it at your, at the pump, you've seen it in your supplies, you've seen it in your cereal. I believe that we've also seen a nationwide increase in wages, especially in California. I know that my, my cost of wages and even our city's cost of wages in other areas have escalated dramatically over the last, especially the last, uh, 12 months. And so would the cost to operate any business like Waste Management have a similar change in its cost basis. If it can't suddenly find staff to hire at $15 an hour or $14 an hour and they're training them up for three years to get them ready and, no, they've got to start hiring at $20 an hour, their cost basis changes. The simple fact is that we negotiated a, a solid contract that has caps in it to make sure that our citizens have a reasonable increase versus a unreasonable. It's designed that way. The mathematics work in, in accordance with what we agreed upon in the contract. And this is 6% increase with a 3.1% carryover. This is not a heavily controversial, but I will now welcome everyone's opinions on trash. I mean, I, I'm not trying to, to sugarcoat that, but we are well aware of it. And, you know, we've done our best to make sure that, um, cost of living increases, if you run a business, um, you have them every year. It's, it's a fact of life. Um, some years they go up 2%. Some years they go up 12%. You hope you don't have a lot of 12% because what happens is, if you do it once or twice to that business, they call you and they go, um, I'm not happy with this and I'm going to stop. Um, and so we've put those stops in this contract with the 6% limit. Um, and now I will, uh, welcome other council members to share any of their thoughts. I'm going to go with Skip first.
When I look through the data in our agenda that's doubling as the LA Telephone Directory this week, I wasn't compelled by any data offered supporting the increase. Indeed, I remember back, uh, not too long ago, we had a little bit of a town hall with Waste Management, didn't we? How long ago was that?
We've had, we've had three town halls and we just had a city org meeting, if that's the one you're most recently.
To our credit, it was a graciously toned, but most people had complaints. There's a visceral content, there's a visceral content to this that if you want to talk to the man in the street about, um, Waste Management's performance over the last couple of years, you, you'll find negative responses, I do at least. The, um, the trucks are missing pickups. By the way, we started off with an awful looking batch of trucks. Now they, they seem to be, uh, new and clean. God bless you for that. Also, the price of diesel fuel, I, I looked at some graph on the internet. Over the last year here in California has been inexorably down. That is, on, on a line that, uh, comes down to, on the right, uh, which is good, uh, which doesn't support an increase. Trouble is, people who do need to contact whoever it is that just missed picking up their cans, have to go through a Byzantine labyrinth of robotic voices on the phone before, uh, they may or may not end up talking to a live human being. Uh, the, the local responsiveness has been wanting, according to the people who I chat with. And also, forgive my candid, the, the request for an increase at this time is tone deaf under the circumstances. All things considered, I wonder where the desperation came from. This initiative was, uh, comes from Waste Management, I understand. I don't think it was a city's initiative to offer an increase. And, um, if I were sitting on the board at Waste Management, by the way, I don't know what level, state, county, area, um, that management's decision is made to seek an increase happens. But I would think that when that board got together, the last thing they should be doing right now is seeking an increase for, uh, trash collection in Ridgecrest. Because, uh, it's just going to rile everybody and, um, perhaps give Waste Management, which is a noble company, what, $14 billion? A little bit of a black eye locally. My feeling is, I'm not against an increase, but I am now. Perhaps next year.
Go ahead, Scott.
So I, I have a couple of questions. Um, when was the last, uh, rate increase? When was the last rate? Okay, and I, I don't recall what the, the amount was.
30%? It was when we implemented, uh, SB 13.
Apologies, it was when we implemented 1383. That was the last increase.
The state mandated.
When we, when we made the changes to the biweekly and the trash schedules and everything.
Let me rephrase that. Prior to implementing the new standard set by the state, when was the last rate increase request?
July of 2021.
Okay, and what was that?
Our June, June, July 2021.
And what was that amount?
I think prior, I think, well, they had one last year. There was, uh, increase, um, in 2022 with the increase in trash service costs due to SB 1383. I believe the year prior to that was a 0.8%. Every year we've, they, they come, obviously the costs are, you know, very, I mean, some years they're very low, some years they're moderate. But we have to remember is, is that if we, if we get behind, when are we going to get caught back up? And what does that do when we have to eventually get caught back up? I mean, we're, I mean, we have a little bit of, I mean, we've contracted this out now. If it was just a city and you didn't want to raise rates, we would just delve into the general fund to pay for it out of other tax revenue. If we don't give a raise this time, then maybe we have to readjust some things in the contract that we don't do to make up for the decrease. But at the end of the day, um, costs have gone up, I think everybody knows. And if we don't keep up, and right now, our trash service cost is still very reasonable. If you look around the rest of the state. And I, and I get the fact is that some people may be upset at the transition from, you know, to the SB 1383 to every other week service. We're working with Waste Management. I mean, there's been, you know, can they improve on how they deal with the customer service? Yes, but you're asking for a significant change in people's behavior by asking them to now participate in source separation to save money. Now, we can, we can readjust this contract and go to weekly trash service, but you're going to be increasing your trash service by another 20%. Right now, we are, we are looking and monitoring how this works. If the community, you know, participates or separates, our organic goes up, our recycled goes up, the amount of trash goes down, then we're moving forward. So right now, we're, we're six months into an implementation of a very difficult program. Because not only does it include, um, people changing their habits, it also includes at the same time, the issues that most businesses have with employees, the changeover employees and that sort of stuff. So, yeah, can they improve? I, I think they will over time, in my opinion. And, and I know it's tempting to, to make a point, but.
So, so my question is, so I understand that, um, that we've had raises, you know, in the, in the cost, um, in the past prior to SB 1383, but in preparing for SB 1383 weren't, or why wasn't, you know, because we, we've known during COVID, I mean, we've seen it within our city, that costs to do a project have gone up 15, 20%, you know, on average. And so, you know, my question is, you know, for labor, fuel costs and inflation, you know, it would seem that those issues should have been addressed in the initial, in those contracts.
It was, it was addressed last July.
At the time of implementing 1383, so that we, we wouldn't be sitting here in the throes of this, uh, contentious trash debate right now with the public, you know, that's not happy with the overall.
Correct.
Position that we're in, and now we're asking for another raise in the price. And it's like, I'm with Skip, the timing is horrible.
Correct, the timing, right, i- is always horrible. But, you know, any other, you know, government contract that you have that allows for economic adjustments throughout the contract, I mean, we either abide by the contract or we don't. I mean, we have other ways of addressing Waste Management if the council's not happy with what's happening. But I still think contractually, we still have to hold up our part because y- y- you still have costs. Now, there was a, a, uh, cost increase last contract and that was based upon what was increased from '21 to '22. Now we're looking at the increase in costs from '22 to '23. We're, we're always looking back at this. And the formula that we came up with, I believe, is fair for both parties. We negotiated it with folks that are, are professionals in the trash business, HFNH. I believe we got a fair, um, formula. This is not something where they're coming to us and saying, hey arbitrarily, these are our costs, these are based upon, upon increases that are provided by the government, um, that we're actually basing this upon. So it's not like Waste Management's coming and saying, well, I, I want a 9.1% increase. We actually have data, government sites we go to where we verify this information. And so we did our job as staff to try and find a way where we can control an arbitrary increase that, that's not justified by the numbers.
And if I'm the head mayor, the, the, to what the city manager said.
Go ahead.
Because we don't have the contract with Waste Management. The city council doesn't really set the rates. We, that's why we're not doing a Prop 218 hearing. It, it is a contractual obligation with Waste Management. Under the terms of the contract, they are entitled to present a request for an increase, an increase as in contractually capped. But unless there's flaw in the calculations, which are the basis for that increase request, we're under contractual obligation, uh, to either adjust the services or comply.
Well, there's no doubt, I feel like we, we should keep current because, you know, the, the goal of the city and, and other issues is that, you know, in the years past, we, you know, the city hadn't stayed current on bringing, keeping up on rates, you know, and fees, whether it was with permitting or, um,
Yeah, well, I will.
Business licenses. And, and so I'm a firm believer that you, you don't want to neglect these incremental increases because then you end up in a worse position in the future. So I, I'm in favor of, of, of keeping up on, you know, annual cost increases. And, uh, so that, that's not the issue. My, my question was, was it not, um, absorbed into it when the, when SB 1383 was passed? And then this is, you know.
Maybe that was, that was a year, that was a year going back. We always look at, we always look at years going, numbers going back of what the experiences.
Previous increases and so which wasn't a great amount back then.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, I think it was, I think it was 5% or 6% last year that was included with the, the cost for the increase of SB 1383.
Or is it 0.8%?
No, that was 0.8% was a year previous, that was in '20.
Of the year before that, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Correct, yeah.
And so that increase was.
Right, I mean, we, I mean, staff keeps an eye on this. I know we've been meeting with, uh, Waste Management internally, periodically, actually quite frequently. So from staff's position, we understand where Waste Management's at. They've been fully transparent on their issues that they've been having and what they're trying to do to move forward. Now, maybe what the council needs to see is periodically have Waste Management come to a full council meeting. So if the council as a full body wants to discuss things with Waste Management, maybe that's the time to do it. Denying them a contractual obligation to increase in fees just creates problems contractually. If, if the issue is, is you want to have Waste Management come to council and, and discuss what they're doing to try and rectify these issues. And I think the, the, maybe the, the appropriate action then would be, instead of, instead of us going to city org, we bring them to council if that's what council wishes to do. That may be a better way for some of the council people who do not sit on the city org committee to, to be able to address some of their current concerns directly with Waste Management rep.
And, and speaking from the city org committee, I mean, we just had them here in May, April? April?
April.
Ashley? April, yeah. I mean, we, so, so I mean, she had to come and suffer slings and arrows for about 90 minutes of us asking, you know, exactly the same questions. Where are we coming along with the trucks? Where are we coming along with staff? But I just want to give perspective, uh, you know, you have, um, I have a business, I, I run a business, I don't own a business, obviously, I run a business. I saw from June of last year to January, February of this year, an about 15% increase in my costs of staffing. increase in my costs of staffing just in order to maintain, keep or, or bring in staff. And so part of what you're having is the time delay, is, we all know that America's Rescue Plan triggered a massive inflation wave on the nation that is still in existence today in many, many ways and, and many, many services and cost supplies, everything else we saw. We saw the great reshuffle of staffing hitting last year that caused the surge in wages that had not existed in the same way in twenty-one. And so I think there's a certain amount of time delay that's, that's in here. And the fact that they've had to, I, I know that they've had the staffing challenges, it's a shame, Ashley shared those with us, we appreciated the transparency that they did bring to us, that I think that we have to recognize that a huge chunk of this is, is what's happened and transpired in the economics over the last year, especially in terms of staffing costs. Staffing costs have changed dramatically, especially on the, the service side sector. Everyone, every, the cost of living went up and the cost of wages went up because as the cost of living went up, the competition to retain staff went up, and that left, had people jumping jobs. And so it's a perfectly reasonable increase. I, I agree, we can all take the perspective of waste management, now wasn't the time to submit this, we could all, we can have that conversation, but I think that they have an obligation to run their business, you know, successfully and profitably, just the same, unfortunately, good, bad or indifferent.
And we have an obligation to keep current on it.
Yeah.
And that's, that's my concern, there's no.
And to fulfill our contract.
Yeah, I don't feel there's a good, ever a good time.
Yeah.
To raise, but it's not, it's not going to get any better.
I totally understand the cost effect. I'm not concerned about that. Everything has gone up, so they are justified in asking for an increase, but my concern is we have other issues, like people have been complaining that, especially the trash, trash in the sense, the trash, not the organic and not the recycle. That, they want the trash to be picked up every week, and there are many people who are willing to pay more for a good service. So that's what I have been hearing. So my question to waste management is, if we have to do trash every week, what would be the increase in that price approximately?
I can tell you that because we looked at it, you're looking at another twenty, twenty-five percent increase.
So which is dollar-wise, two dollars, three dollars?
Five to, was it eight?
Yeah, you're probably talking another five to six dollars a month. Now, one of the things that we are, that we're looking at is, is that, let's say we do weekly trash pickup, there's probably going to be temptation just to throw everything in the trash, then we still have an issue of, are we complying with SB thirteen eighty-three? If we're not complying with SB thirteen eighty-three, then compliance issues come into play. Most of the people that I, I believe this is a, it's going to take a time for people to transition into figuring out a way, how do they source separate their trash? So by just picking it up weekly, that's not going to solve us in compliance because right now, most of the stuff that you have that decays goes into your organics can and is picked up weekly. So I, I would probably argue that if we go to weekly service, you're going to have some people complain because they are following the process. I know in my household, we're following it, it's not a big deal. So we can go back to weekly, we just need time to take a look at it. We may be able to find a way of, of altering the contract where if somebody forgets to put out their trash, maybe we, we pay a tad bit more and we have them be able to call to come pick it up. But I think we're a little too premature to do this just yet because we haven't really given it time for people to change their habits. We've had a complication issue when it came to waste management and their labor issues. So I think we need to give just a little bit of time, see where we're at, because I think you might have just as much of a pushback if we raise the rates and go to weekly service versus just staying the course, because there are some people that have enjoyed having a lower rate of costs. We've done everything we can to keep our costs down. I know we can't give senior discounts, but most of our senior folks live alone, and so we got it to where you have a reduced price when it comes to your size of your can so you can save about four or five bucks a month. We've done everything we can to try and bring this in as smooth as we can, but you're also talking about changing people's habits. And I think that we have to give that just a little bit of time before, I mean, I'm, if you, if the council wants us to go back to weekly trash, just let me know, I'll renegotiate to get a price and then we'll, we'll implement it, not an issue. But I think, I think that at the end of the day, people, I mean, you have people upset about the trash increase and by a dollar twenty-four, we're still going to have those increases because the costs are still going up. Until inflation and, and fuel prices level off, this is where we're going to be at for a while. So now you, you're not going to do away with, you know, the CPI increases, all you're going to do now is compound it. So, I mean, we can go there, we are monitoring this. I mean, I, I think we just need, my view is, we just need to be patient, see where we're at, let's get through the summer, do an analysis of where we're at on how much diversion we have, you know, is the amount of, of, of organics material going up, is the amount of recycled materials going up, is the amount of trash going down? Otherwise, I don't, you know, if, if we just go back to weekly service and people just shove that stuff in the can, then, then really what's going to happen is we're going to go to AI and they're going to take pictures of your trash and they're going to send you fines in the mail. And I think that when that happens, you're going to have a bigger issue down the road. Otherwise, you know, we're going to have a compliance issue. So that's where we're heading, and that's what we're trying to avoid, in all frankness.
So we have done several surveys, so have we ever done a survey on trash? What our public wants? Whether they want trash to be picked up every week or not, whether they are willing to pay more for that?
We could do a survey on that, but I think the big question is, is that most people would say, pick up my trash weekly and don't raise my rates, is what you're going to get.
That's what we will ask them.
Right. Now, we could do a survey and see where people are at, but I think that we, we could eventually get there. I think my recommendation is, is we give a little bit, see where we're at in six months from now. If we still have the same issues and, and the majority of public wants to go back to it, then fine. I mean, I'm not, I'm not sold on this. As your city manager, I'm responsible for complying with the regulations. You know, I'm trying the best I can to keep us out of trouble. I know the county's going to have their fair share of issues because they've, are going a different direction, they're not in compliance, they're eventually going to have to be in compliance. So not unless the law changes, we're doing our best to basically keep ahead of the curve here, which I believe in the long run will save our citizens a lot of money. Now, I think that it can be argued that the people who have trash issues, if you've got a large family, you can get another can. I like to argue that if you have issues with your trash, are you really source separating? And is that the issue? So I don't know. All I know is that we've been given a difficult job to try and comply with this regulation. You, you hired me to do this, and so I got to do what I have to do to comply. Now, if council wants to go a different direction, I'll go your direction, but just to, you know, there's obviously going to be pushbacks one way or the other.
Yeah, I've been talking to so many people, so whoever I spoke to, they said they're willing to pay more for a better service, so.
If that.
There might be some people who don't want to pay more, I'm not denying that.
Sure.
So I'm little hesitant to go with this increase without solving that problem.
Well, I think that we need to continue to look at how this progresses. I mean, it took, how many years did it take for people to wear their seatbelt in their car? How many years did it take for people to be okay with not smoking in a bar? I mean, any time you make a, a major change in people's personal habits, you're going to have pushback. And the point is, is that my belief from the state is, is that, I don't know, maybe Josh can get up and, and, and discuss this, I don't think they're backing off of this and we're going to have to figure out a way of complying. So we either, we either work our way to try and work our community in compliance with this thing, or we end up out of compliance and then we're dealing on the other end with two years down the road, dealing with how are we going to enforce this? And, and really, the way the state's looking at this is we're going to be issuing fines.
But we see it all over, Mr. Strand, I mean, the trash cans are always overflowing. So how are we going to solve that problem?
There are always, there are always what? Excuse me, I didn't hear the last part.
Overflowing and the trash is coming out.
Well, I think a lot of that has to do with people's habits. I mean, if you are, I mean, we had this issue before where, where people were throwing their trash into other people's trash cans and the lid wouldn't close, the ravens would get in, the trash would go over. I think it's, you know, part of where we're heading is having mandatory trash for everybody and so everybody has their own trash can to deal with their own trash issues. You know, we've had people in the past that we had issues out here at, at the city hall where people were just dumping their trash on the way to work and we didn't have any room for our trash. So, so I think a lot of it has to do with just changing people's habits, getting more people to subscribe to trash, more people to source separate, and then see where we're at. I'm not opposed to going to weekly service, I just know the community, we tried our best to make sure that this was at the lowest cost increase impact to our community because I think that the theme of sitting in this chair for six years is, is that people want a lot of stuff and not want to pay for it. And so we're trying to work our way to make this as least impactful as possible. So if, 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 if that's where the council wants to go eventually, great, we'll, we'll implement it, we'll do weekly trash, but then the next issue is going to be is our compliance problem. And, and that's still going to come, that's still going to come home to roost.
Somehow we have to manage the complaint, so that should not be an excuse for not doing things right.
Right. I'm going to throw something, just to make sure that, that, again, from a public perspective, I, I think that one of the things that people may or may not have an understanding on is, as a community, we were required to put recycling in back in twenty twelve, and that's what started, that was Trashgate One, that was Bens, that was the hiring of waste management, that was that contract, that was all of that work, all of that contention, all of that arguing that we love to do, Hatfields and McCoys around here sometimes, we love to do that. The problem is from twenty twelve all the way to implementation of SB thirteen eighty-three in twenty twenty-two, our town's overall acceptance of using the recycling sucked. I'm not going to put a better word on it, sucks, because we want to, we want to believe in our opinion as being the most important opinion in the room. And the simple fact is that what this is allowing the city to do, and this is why we got the biweekly petition and why we, we made that recommendation, why staff worked that direction, was, I'm going to use the same, I've posted it three times on my site, I'm going to say it again, I saw my kids fill two recycling bins, and I had not seen them fill a recycling bin in their lifetime over, from twenty twelve when I had my first kid, all the way until twenty twenty-three when they were starting to be forced to. And the reason why is because suddenly mommy and daddy had to say, don't put that cardboard box in the trash and fill it up, break it down and put it in the stupid recycling, and so we can make sure that we have trash can space for the two weeks. Very simple, but then I saw, wait, it was the Neapolitan ice cream box, wait, it was, it was this box, wait, it was this can, wait, it was this wine bottle, wait, it was this beer bottle, wait, you know, it kind of multiplied. But then I also have the people that say, that send me a picture of overflowing trash and complaining about what it is with the organic can sitting next to it and a pizza box sticking out of the trash can, which tells me that the effort to sort the trash is not occurring. And so one of the reasons why sticking to the biweekly trash is because, like anything else, as Ms. City Manager Strand said, we're not going to get people to change their habits overnight, and if we don't change the habits, Cow Recycle is going to come back in and they're going to have no mercy. They have, I, I, I would, I would attest to City Manager Strand, and if Josh wants to, I, I believe Cow Recycle might be the, the most radicalized, crazy organization in the entire state government system in terms of what their expectations are. They want it and they want it yesterday because they think the world's going to change overnight because we suddenly get some trash out of the landfill. So the simple fact is that we've got a contract agreement with them, this is the expectation to continue on it, I happen to agree with City Manager, and we have to watch this thing out and see what those diversionary numbers look like and whether we've moved ourselves off of a Cow Recycle precipice or not, because we decided to live on it for way too long. And that's simply because our community didn't want to deal with it and they didn't want to accept it. And, and they think that dumping it illegally, I just got a complaint today about illegal dumping at a commercial site, I've had my trash can filled at my business, you know, they think that illegal dumping is perfectly reasonable, there's a trash can there, I can use it, and that's the attitude of people. And, and so I think that sticking the course to make sure that our diversion numbers and our city compliance is in line is absolutely critical. But just some perspective on it, if we don't fix diversion, we're going to find ourselves with a bigger problem and, and maybe right back into the county position where we all of a sudden have to force compliance through property tax. And I don't think anybody on this council wants to be in that position, and I'm sure our county residents are, are thrilled that they're taking a second look at it. So, yeah.
So I just want to say, I think we're, we're looking at two issues here. One, we're looking at a annual increase in the cost of doing business for, for waste management. And the second is the issues pertaining to people, whether they're happy or not, not happy with the service, you know, that, that, and the changes due to SB thirteen eighty-three. If we were to take SB thirteen eighty-three out of the picture, we'd be reviewing this and we'd have been done and on to the next topic.
Yep.
So I'm in, in favor of what this issue is exactly. I'm in agreement also with Councilman Roger Rottenham about, I, I too have had people tell me that I wish we could just have weekly service and I would pay the extra amount. So that's not a, you know, you're not alone in, in hearing that from the community.
Yeah, I've heard that.
So I think it's something that we should sit, and, and City Manager Strand brought up, you know, good point, that we stay in close communications with waste management in the very near future and keep this rapport going to address these issues and whether or not we need to fix it or try to fix it better in, in the future. But I think we needed to stay focused on exactly what it is we're looking at tonight, and that's a simple annual increase in cost of operations that looks reasonable.
Okay. I will now welcome public comment. Is there any public comment from the floor? And I do know there is a caller on the phone that has held, I will get to you as soon as I clear the floor, thank you.
Hello, my name is Kyle Benson. I wrote a whole speech, but after hearing the council, some of the council members' opinions on this trash matter, some things are going to be changed, please bear with me, I'll try to be as fast as I can to be mindful of everyone's time. Waste Management's negotiation for this increase, Waste Management's increase has already been pre-negotiated. This was done without the consent of the people. This contract was put in place without a wide effort to contact us and have us be part of this. I can tell you from a fact from discussing with my neighbors and members of the community, people want weekly trash, they're willing to pay extra. You can simply put out a survey and ask, would you like to pay more for weekly trash by a set amount, show them what their bills are going to be, or would you like us to keep it this way? What's, uh, City Manager Strand just said was very concerning to me. He stated that if we go to weekly trash, that people won't be compliant. Your job isn't to get us, to get our compliance, your job is to serve us. Your, your job's not to get our compliance, it's to listen to what our wills and what our wants are, we elected you for these positions. We're all feeling max inflation like you guys acknowledged, we have the new tax for Measure P, which was voted on by the city and passed, and the increases in our water bill. Yes, wages have gone up, but we're still drowning. The people cannot afford these, we're surrounded by flies, the smells are atrocious, trash is all over the street all of the time because trash cans are overflowing. You say just get another trash can, that's more expensive than us paying for a monthly, weekly pickup. And you say you want compliance and that's why people need to stick to it, so you're going to punish the many for the few that don't want to follow compliance? It, it's unfair and unjust. Waste Management, how dare you provide, not provide proper service then request more money? I have had trash not picked up and I have talked to multiple people throughout the city who have had the same experiences, not to mention when I called, it took me thirty minutes to get through. And the lady I spoke to, I had to argue. She said, no, your trash was picked up. And I said, well, every trash on my street is full, well, we show it's been picked up. I had to argue. It should be, I called, my word is taken at its value. Why would I lie about my trash not being picked up? That's silly. Yes, I'm shedding light on negatives of this because the people weren't taken into consideration at all. The first I had heard about this was our trash talks, which I greatly appreciate, but we. we, we weren't brought into the talks on this. This has been known since 2012. How many talks did we have on this since before trash talks started, before the first three trash talks? I, I don't think we had any. And if we did, it definitely wasn't why they advertised, it wasn't put out so people can get their voices heard. And the city council is not entirely to blame. I'm truly saddened by this turnout. I, I hear so many people complain, and people aren't here to make their voices heard. If you want change, you have to come and make yourself heard, you enact change. I spoke to the city planner, that's who I called yesterday when I was trying to get the details on this meeting, and she said, "The council is dedicated to trying to make this work." Like I said previously, we have spoken, we, we've done polls on Facebook, we, we want weekly pickups. Picking up that second trashcan isn't an option for everyone, but five extra dollars a month? A lot more people can afford that than, what's the rate for another 96 gallon bin? So, $10, so double that to get yourself an extra trashcan, or pick it up weekly like everyone wants. Something that broke my heart, at the la- at the very first trash talk I went to, there was a 96-year-old man who was taking care of his elderly wife who was in Contonan. He had diapers filling up his trashcan even with weekly pickups. You know what the city's suggestion to him was? Take it to the dump. He's 96, you want him to load up a 96-gallon trash can into his sedan and, full of poop, and drive it to the dump? This is unreasonable and absurd. I ask that you please listen to our voices, you please listen to our requests. I thank you for everything that you guys have done. I heard Councilman Skip and Hayman, and I don't want to butcher your name, I, I heard your concerns, and I greatly appreciate that. I, I appreciate you guys have done a lot of good for this community, bringing back false night, I don't want it to all be negative, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment?
I'm not sure what to say about this trash situation. I, I think it's been at least 10 years, it just seems to never end. And now, I, I didn't realize this actually until a couple months ago, that they're gonna implement the same kind of plan for the county. And we get a, we haven't gotten anything in the mail. I had no idea, and I usually stay pretty up on things. And it apparently was, they were gonna add $560 a year, and it goes on to our tax bill, which, you know, I live in a house all by myself, I've, I've been hauling the garbage to the dump, I, I recycled religiously for years. And 560 bucks, I mean, you know, so it's, it's, it may not be a lot of money to some of you, but, but I look at it a little differently. So, I would suggest that you, I know you've got a lot of problems to deal with on this, on a local level, but I think it, it's going to adversely affect the people in the county, which are your neighbors and your community, even though they're not in the city limits. I think you might want to get a little bit more aggressive in your pushback on the state. When you add up all the, the things that we're confronted with, the sales tax increase, the groundwater authority fee, the wastewater treatment fee, the, what am I missing? I know there's something. You know, it's just, it's, it's getting to be, in California, it's not your fault, but this, this is, seems almost intentional, especially with the water, the sigma. I, I view sigma as, as a forced conservation plan that's not necessary. I mean, I think if the state would spend their money on reservoirs and canals and not flush it out in the ocean, we wouldn't have sigma. And I think recycling was working. I don't know why in Ridgecrest it wasn't, maybe it wasn't convenient enough. I've, I've suggested before that Arizona had, or at least Phoenix, had a pretty darn good trash collection program, and they ran it themselves. I know that the city can't do that, but this is a problem. So, I mean, for me, it's what, it's, it's almost the last straw, you know? So, I, I would suggest you, you start getting a little agency civil disobedience, maybe, and start working with the state and see if there's a, something you can do, and, or then work with the county, because they've got just as much of a problem, even more of a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment from the floor? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and to public comment on the phones. Caller, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Tom Wicknick. First, I'd like to say, even though it doesn't matter anymore, but I think you didn't negotiate a good contract, but put that aside, we gotta live with it, we gotta move on. Okay? Well, I'm hearing too much other than skipping a little bit of the other two, I hear a cheering section for waste management here. And the council is all happy about, not, not happy, but that's probably the wrong word, ready to support a price increase without having, fighting for us, the people, bring them down to your, I have a town hall like you are for this swimming pool, have them come in and defend themselves for all the problems that we're having with trash pickup, and we're paying more. I thank you, Skip, for saying you wanted to vote no. And hold them responsible. How do you hold them responsible? You hold the pocketbook. That's how you hold them responsible. And it's time for you guys to start fighting for us, the people. Have them come down and defend this thing. Don't vote on this tonight, hold off maybe a week or two, or even a month, they can deal with it for a month. Call for a town hall, advertise it on Facebook like you do your swimming pool complex and everything else the city is doing, have them videos about all this stuff. Bring them down here to answer to the people at a town hall, invite everyone to come down here so they can voice their, their complaints. It's bad when I have to call in and say, "I didn't get my ag picked up," which is the only can I got, and I get this word from them saying, "Oh, well, uh, uh, we'll come out tomorrow and pick it up." You're the only one. I say, "I am not the only one, my entire street was not picked up on our scheduled day." The next day came, nothing, they weren't there. Saturday came, nothing, they weren't there. Oh, call them up again on Monday. Oh, yeah, we'll send them out tomorrow. They didn't show. They need to get down here and defend themselves, and you guys need to start fighting for the people, fight back against this insert, not service contract that you got right now. I'm sorry, but I'm a little fired up, but I'm, I'm hearing it too on the people complaining about this trash service. Make them come down here and defend themselves before you vote on this increase. I know apparently you gotta do it because of your contract, but before you vote for it, make them, fight for us and make them come down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I believe there's another caller. Caller, go ahead.
Yeah, hi. The, the thing about the pizza box, right? I was told by somebody picking up the trash one time that if you have a pizza box, it has a piece of cheese in it, that contaminates the whole recycling thing, and they dumped the whole thing in the trash anyway.
Just to be clear, sir, it would be the organics that the pizza box would be in?
No, you can't put the, the pizza box in an organic, in the organic thing. You can only put organics in there, you can't put cardboard in there.
Food waste cardboard is normally, is included in our organics.
I don't know, I've, it's not what, what I've been reading about in, in the regulations.
No problem, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, so, when they did the, um, the organic thing, and this lady from the city got up there and said, "Oh, you have to do this, and then we're gonna start checking," and said, "You can't put anything in there except organics. You can't even put a plastic bag in there unless it's an organic plastic bag." So, I don't, you know, I don't know what's going on with that, but I do know that the recycling thing, if, if you, you put all the right stuff in the recycling bin, and somebody down the street puts in a, a pizza box with a little bit of food in it, then the whole thing gets taken to the dump and not recycling. And it's been going on, you know, it's been going on ever since they started the recycling back in, what, 2012?
Yeah, recycling was implemented 2012.
Okay, well, anyway, that, that's what I had to say, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I believe we have another caller. Caller, go ahead.
Yes?
Go ahead.
Hello?
Hello, go ahead, caller.
Um, what?
If you could just go ahead and say your name, we, we can hear you.
My name is Stephanie Berry.
Go right ahead, Stephanie.
Okay, I would like to mention that I, I think we need to have the option of opting out of this process. We can bring our own trash to the dump, we don't need to pay somebody, and you are causing us excessive fees to do something that we can do ourselves.
Unfortunately, the California Legislature passed SB 1383 in 2016 that no longer allows us to, to offer that.
Well, perhaps we can combine our neighborhood efforts and do it ourselves that way in a more neighborly manner, so we don't have to pay outrageous fees.
Again, California Legislature passed SB 1383 in 2016, which mandates trash service.
So, when I called to cancel my service, I was told I was one of very few cities in California that were required to pay for trash service. How, how does that work? How come other people can opt out and we can't?
SB 1383 has limited language for some rural communities of, of miniscule populations, but other than that, cities and counties statewide have had to implement, which is exactly why we're, current counties in the process of implementing for the unincorporated areas of, of the county, as well as the city was put in place in, in July of last year for implementation in January. It is a state law.
Well, these fees are outrageous, we, we can't afford them.
Appreciate the comment, ma'am, unfortunately, I can't, I, I have, I am obligated by state law to provide a trash service.
Okay, but can you provide it at a cheaper rate then and more service? Because the, the flies every week are crazy from the stupid compost, and it's, this whole process is ridiculous. The, the flies are out of control this year.
That typically happens after a very wet winter.
Uh, no, it happens when everybody's putting ridiculous stuff out on the street. All right, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have another caller? Caller, go ahead. Caller, go ahead.
Hello?
Hi, Stephanie, is that you again?
No, this is Pam.
Okay, Pam, please, go ahead.
Okay, I concur with everybody else's complaints regarding the, it's not the proper time to have the increase. Ever since you've entered into the contract with Waste Management, it has been a yearly increase. They've got an excuse for something, they should have figured this out correctly. I think the city should be looking at a firm fixed price contract with these people and/or based on performance. Either way, we wouldn't be seeing this increase every single year on those two types of contracts. I have a little organics can out here that I feel half-filled, and it falls over because of the wind. We have to turn it sideways in our cul-de-sac, otherwise it's all falling over, and the ravens are in it, it's not like it's overfilled, as the city mayor says. It's half-full, but because the wind blows them over, we turn them sideways, and then the trash truck, I notice, depending on the driver, he will get out, he has to pick them up because they've fallen over, but if they haven't fallen over, like two weeks ago, the lawyer that lives next to me, he turned his sideways, and the trash truck driver would not pick it up. So, those little cans are so lightweight for this area, you put a rock on them, you lose the rock, it's just a combination of chaos that continues to go on, and like everybody, we're tired of all the increases. This yearly coming back just because the city mayor allowed them to enter that into a contract, or maybe you, the council as well, entered into a contract that allows them to come every year. Well, heck, if I got a contract where I can ask for a raise every year, I don't get a raise every year in my job, but if the businessman had a contract, I'd want a contract with you guys. Because you're not do- doing this on a base performance in the best interest of the city, or of the residents here of the city of Ridgecrest. And I think that's what's fired us all up. I only heard about this because I get the news review, and thank you for delivering it to my house, because that's how I found out this, this raise was going to incur. I mean, you'd forget about it over a year's time because everything else is going up. I read it last Friday, that's how I found out it was going to be an increase once again, and that's why I'm on the phone. So, kudos to the news review for keeping us informed. Then I only saw your ad on Facebook, Mayor, that concurred that, oh yes, this was taking place. So, again, we do not have the transparency as residents, as you guys continue to say, that you're trying to do. So, I don't know what the answer is here. You all need to be fired, we all need to reelect new people, because like Hayman, he was in favor with Skip saying, "Oh no, this is not the proper time." He flipped once again, just like he did on other issues. Now he's all, you know, going the other direction, "Oh yeah, I think we should do this." You know, I know about contracts, I come from that background. You can't breach the contract, but maybe we, if we can get through this, when, maybe the city manager needs to enter into a firm fixed price and/or based on performance. And we might have a different company actually providing services, or Waste Management would step up. How long do you allow a company to go that still has the same excuses? Our trash is sitting out here, I went to the dump, I must have counted 10 trucks hauling their own trashcans to the dump and paying additional fee. They wanted to charge me the weight of my truck for a 10-inch board that was six inches wide because he saw that in there. This is out of control, we're paying extra in the dump, these, we're paying extra in the, the trash pickup, it's just, and, and then to get charged for that board on the weight of my truck. I said, "Forget it, I'll turn around, I'll cut the thing up, and it'll fit into my trashcan, that's how I'll dispose of it." That's what you've created, trash is laying in bags all over town. It stinks, it looks trashy, and yet you want to bring tourists here. I don't know what the answer is, but boy, somebody needs to get their act together all the way around and working with a lot of organizations and entities to get something going here in a positive manner, because we're strapped for funds, and we're very angry, as you can hear my voice. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have another caller? Caller, go ahead.
Yeah, so, Mayberry, earlier you had said that people can, people are now making more room in their trashcan because they're separating, and part of the problem with going to weekly is the expense, but if there's now less room in people's trashcans, they can now downgrade to save money themselves. So, I mean, we're saving money either way we look at it, and one way's clearly more favorable than the other.
Apologize, but I'm confused by the question, but that's okay.
Okay, I'll, I'll rephrase it. So, earlier in the conversation, you had said, "People are able to do biweekly because we're now separating our trash into compost and recycling, so there's now more room left in our trashcans," right?
In theory, that you have a set amount of trash, if you are diverting 30% to recycling, you should have 30% additional capacity within trash, yes.
So, then, if we go to weekly, it's a $5 increase, how much is it to go to the next size then? Because if the people who don't want to go to, don't want to pay the funds to go to weekly, just downgrade to the next size smaller bin... to go to weekly, just downgrade to the next size smaller bin, then they're still saving that money. They may be even saving more money now. I, I don't know the prices of the bins.
You're saying, you're saying somebody can go to weekly and then can reduce down to the smaller size.
Exactly.
And, 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 and the simple fact is that that is a possibility, but again, it doesn't, it, my big concern is how it solves our diversionary challenges specifically because the diversionary numbers which we were performing at prior to implementation were on the precipice of fines.
Hmm. I, I mean, we, we have to look at it. That even if, even with the compliance, I mean, that doesn't, that even with trying to get it, doesn't necessarily mean people are going to comply. They're going to start putting stuff in a compost bin that doesn't go into it. The people who aren't listening are going to be the ones that continue not to listen. It doesn't matter what you do. The, the people who aren't listening are continuing to not listen. So it's punishing the many for the few.
One apple spoils the apple cart.
Yeah, but that, that, that's not how democracy is supposed to work. But thank you guys for your time. I appreciate you holding the meeting.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. It appears we have cleared the calls on the phone. Phone number is still up there. I'll allow a few seconds. There's anybody else that has a comment? And we'll go ahead and bring it back to council. Is there any other council comments, questions? Um, I wanted to say publicly, guys, we hear you. We're not opposed to what you're saying. Um, I certainly know I'm not. I, I simply am trying to make the best decision in compliance with the state laws that we have been, uh, saddled with by the California Legislature. And I certainly, um, would encourage anybody to be involved in advocacy, uh, to help us prevent such laws like this occurring in the future.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I've been asked, um, since I've only been a councilman for six months, still got training wheels on, um, how it's been. And my response has always been with a shrug. There's a piece of cake, no challenges. I, I felt like tonight's a challenge, um, because I have enormous regard for our city manager who's the hem of whose robe I'm not worthy to touch. And our, our city lawyer, I, I'm dismayed to understand though that, um, my vote on this issue would be a bit performa, um, have no effect because of the way the contract's written. I don't care for contracts like that at all. Uh, while I was doing, um, a career on base as, um, COTAR Contracting Officers Technical Representative, I managed some big contracts and, ah, we never had one like this. We've always had trouble getting our trash picked up, even before Waste Management. We had Bents who I'll say now was probably worse, but, um, if you go shopping, you set your standards by Nordstrom's. At least I do. They're the I would love for Waste Management to be the Nordstrom's of, uh, trash pickup. And you get a chance to showcase that here. Would be your most ardent champions, would brag about you to other cities. And you have, uh, your share of challenges with our strange weather, uh, some goofball in Sacramento giving birth to, what's the number?
1383.
1383, which has hamstrung us like crazy and you guys more so than anybody. And it does nothing, um, but cause problems. But for this issue, I must vote no, even if it doesn't make any difference.
I want to thank all the citizens who spoke up.
Can you turn your mic on, sir?
I want to thank all the citizens who spoke up on this issue. We heard you. I mean, unfortunately, there was no comment who in favor of the, this contract. So I want to listen to the citizens. I totally understand, as I said in the beginning, I understand the increase in the cost, but I also want to make sure our citizens are served better. Uh, I want the staff to bring this back, including the weekly trash picker and see how much it would cost. So the contract as it is, I'm not ready to vote, uh, vote yes.
It's just, it's just back to council if there's any other council comments. If, um, there is none, then I will entertain a motion for approval of the resolution. Hearing none, I have no resolution to move forward with.
You have to be mindful that.
Yeah, we're violating contract.
We can delay this, but the only thing that's going to happen is when we eventually approve it, it'll just go retro pay by the contract.
Sure.
So we're just creating.
Yeah, I, I mean, my, my, my question to my fellow, to my two council members would be what is it you want to see in order for us to not be into contract violation with wa, with Waste Management?
Mayor, if, if I may, uh, chairman, Mayor and council members, just to potentially, um, respond to a, to a comment that was made, um, been doing this for about 30 years and every single contract with a city that is with an outside agency, where the city is not the provider of solid waste disposal, has the provisions that are in this contract.
Yeah. I mean, I, I can't tell you, I'm just, I'm asking, what is it that you want to see?
I want to see a reasonable price increase, including weekly trash pickup.
Isn't that two separate issues? Yeah, if, if council wants, we can, we can bring, we can bring, we can get with Waste Management, get what the cost is, and we can bring it back to council. And if, if council wishes to go that way, we can modify the contract. I'm sure that.
Bringing back weekly trash as, as a topic of conversation is one thing.
Right.
But I don't want to increase now and again, after six months, come back and say we are doing this. We want to increase the price. So let us do everything at one shot, if at all we want to do that.
I'll be frank, you're putting us in a, in a tough negotiating bracket here. If you're wanting to protect the, the citizens of Ridgecrest in all honesty, this is probably a conversation to be held in closed session with all due respect. Cause otherwise, if they want to go back weekly, what, what is our $10, $12 a month I mean, I think, you know, the, my, from my perspective is staff has been monitoring this and I, and I think there has been issues with.
Service.
The, the service. And I think that we can, we can address that now. If, if the council wishes to go back weekly, my thought all along was, I'm ambivalent as your city manager, whether or not council wants to go back to weekly trash. My concern obviously is our citizens and what they're going to pay and how that's going to work out in the long run. And that's why I think that my belief is the, I know it's tempting to, to not do this. And, and as your city manager will go whichever way you guys want to go, we'll enter this arena. I have a problem with it. But you understand there, there, there may be, there's other ways of, of handling this other than, now if you want us to come back, great. If you want to bring Waste Management back in next month and have them come talk to council about what they're doing to address the citizens' concerns, that may be a better way of doing that. But if you're dead set on come back to weekly, then that's something you can give us direction. We'll enter negotiations, but I'll be frank, you're, you're putting us in a kind of a difficult situation negotiating for the benefit of the citizens.
One other item that you may consider as a council is to move to continue this item until you have the full council deliberating it.
That would be an option too. Skip, how would you feel about that? Continuing the item until the full council's breath?
I agree with that.
Okay.
It, it obviously will put us.
Yeah, and then we would ask Waste Management to come back. They are present. They have been here throughout, um, and they've been hearing the same concerns that you guys have been sharing for anybody out there that thinks that they're not here. They're, they're here listening. Um, we can continue the item until the July, um, 19th meeting.
Yeah.
Um, Waste Management, are you comfortable with allowing us to continue the item until that time for further discussion?
Work for you.
Thank you very much, sir. Um, Doc, how do you feel about that?
I'm okay with, uh, bringing it to the next meeting. I prefer to handle it tonight, but I, I see this as two separate issues that, uh, one.
Yeah, I do too.
We're addressing tonight. And the second is the very issues that Councilman Raj Ratnam.
Yeah, we, I, my concern is that, that is negotiating weekly service is going to be a, a much larger can of conversation. Their annual contract request, which is contractual, choosing to not do that is going to be problematic. It, that's one problem. And we're stacking two problems on top of each other. And that's what I believe City Manager Strange's concern is this puts us in a bad negotiating position.
But there is a provision in the contract where it allows us to go back to weekly.
Right, we're not debating that. We would have that conversation. We're saying their requested increase that's in front of us by resolution, which is capped at the 6%, even though the request is at 9.1, is capped at 6% by contract is one issue. The desire of, of the council to change back to weekly service is a secondary issue, is a second issue.
In a perfect world, if those issues were resolved and a new contract, you know, was.
It, it may take some time to negotiate that back in the contract.
But the, uh, the fact is.
Yeah, cause you're talking buying extra trucks. You're talking a lot of other issues that we avoided, uh, in the first contract now coming back in the renegotiation. So if we're going to do this right and if council wants to go that way, then we should probably agendize that as a separate item.
And we'd have to go back for approval to call recycle as well, right?
What I was going to say is that we're going to be sitting back here next year or when the next adjustment occurs, doing the same thing again with the new changes. Wouldn't change.
Wouldn't change the contractual obligation, right.
Mayor, if, if, if I may, I, I, I'm going to concur with the city manager. And it would be my recommendation that, that further discussion with regard to details of these issues, you know, other than making a motion and moving the silent to the next council meeting, if that is the desire of the council. I, I think dwelling into any further issues regarding contractual obligations or lack thereof, uh, it's probably a better subject matter for closed session.
Okay. Well, I, once again, I called, uh, there was a call for motion. There was no motion made. Um, and is there an agreement amongst us to continue the item to the July 19th meeting?
I would, uh, recommend that a motion be made, seconded and voted on.
I agree. I'm, I'm, that's what I'm getting.
I'll make a motion to move this to our next scheduled city council meeting.
I have a motion to continue the item until the 19th. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and second. Roll call vote.
Mayor Brun?
Aye.
Mr. Raj Ratnam?
Aye.
Mr. Hayman?
Aye.
Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
Four ayes with one absent motion carries to continue to the next meeting.
Thank you. We are moving on to item number eight. Item 98, item number eight is discussion regarding the Board of the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority. Mr. Hayman.
Thank you, Mayor. So we did meet on Wednesday, June 14th, and I will go over some of the highlights of our last meeting. So beginning with, um, agenda item number nine, which was Board to receive and file the 2021 financial audit from Brown Armstrong. I think the council and everybody was aware that we had, um, there was a delay in getting that, um, audit from, uh, Brown and Armstrong and, um, but we're happy to have received it at the last meeting and the audit was a clean audit. There was no negative discrepancies noted. And so, um, that's, that issue has been cleared up now. So, um, moving on to item number 10, Communication and Engagement Plan Updates and Board Direction. Uh, the PAC had, um, at the helm of Dave Janis had put together, I think, a very, um, well-planned communication and engagement, um, procedure for us. And so I look forward to integrating that and it should really help the GA and communicating with the public and to the stakeholders and, um, and helping to keep the public educated on, on what's brought us to this position with, um, the water, um, sustainability, uh, issues that we're, you know, being forced to deal with, with the state. And so, um, I was really pleased to see that. That's been something that would, would have been nice to have even if we could have been doing that from the beginning, but, um, we're happy to have it, have it in progress. So item number 11 was Resolution 06-23, Providing Procedure to Address Legislative Response Needs of the Authority. And basically that was, uh, pertains to, there's a lot of, um, active legislation that is moving through the state and, um, and through the federal side. And so this allows the, um, Capitol Court particularly, who is, uh, leading us in, uh, a lot of the legislative, um, and the GA itself, but, um, in a, a lot of the legislative matters that are coming before us. And sometimes things move quickly. So this would allow them to act and, and, um, write letters or move, um, on pieces of legislation and, um, con, you know, through contact and approval, not so much approval, but just contact with the, uh, the chair or the vice chair. And it just should be clearly noted that this is not, these are on items that were already approved by the board. So it's not new items. So that would require the full board support. Um, so that was approved. Item number 12, Department of Water Resources, uh, request for supplemental monitoring to address wet conditions. Uh, this was a new one from the, uh, DWR, um, with the, uh, increase in water from our wet winter. Um, they're requesting that we, um, monitor some of the net effects of, of the, uh, increased water on our basin, whether it's in increases in wells or, you know, any groundwater table, um, changes. So, um, that was approved and, um, the, uh, staff and, uh, our water resource manager is, uh, currently working on that. And that was followed by the Water Resources Managers Report, which, um, basically I'd say probably the, the highlight was, um, the Rose Valley, um, well drilling that has been, uh, going on. They, um, they pushed through some of the rock. I think we'd mentioned, I'd mentioned in the past that they had hit a, hit a major rock layer. And so they pushed through that, but they're still kind of boring through more, uh, heavy, heavy layer. Um, but they're optimistic that they are, are getting down to the, uh, water table. And so at that point then they'll begin to, to, um, begin to monitoring of that well. And to date, LADWP had released approximately 7,000 acre feet of water into the basin. Uh, and that's through the, uh, I call it bleed offs or releases that they, uh, points that they have along their pipeline. The, initially there were five, but they are down to two now. The, um, Freeman, uh, Freeman Gap or Freeman Junction?
Freeman Gulch.
Freeman Gulch, yeah, that's it. And the Bird Springs runoff. So anybody that's driven south of town, we have a nice desert creek flowing through the desert right now. But, um, it'll, it'll be, um, ending, you know, probably late summer. So that concludes my report. Um, any questions that you may have, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Have they gotten any progress on what they think saturation value is?
So they are monitoring the water releases. Um, they've taken water samples in hopes of being able to trace that water and where it goes. At this point, no.
We don't have anything.
No, um, no idea.
We have to wait several months to get the statistical.
Right. Everything has to soak into the water table if it does and then be drawn out or, you know, able to relocate down the road. But, um, it is something that they're trying to glean information.
Yeah, like anything else, we have to give it enough time so that we can have a statistical basis on which to make decisions.
Yeah, and may or may not pan out, but. Yeah, and may or may not pan out, but...
Any other questions from council? So, no? I have no other questions. Is there any comments from the public?
I have to take this opportunity. So if I understand correctly, we have about a 13,000 acre-feet-a-year deficit, right? In other words, we're pumping about 21, 22, and we're only calculating a recharge of 7,500. So maybe around, let's say, 13,000 acre-feet. And that may be increased, or at least the 7,500 may go up to, let's say, 9,500 or 10,000 from the... Would you rather, would you guys rather I wait? Everybody's leaving. I want to, I want to tell you this story. There's 13,000 acre-feet of deficit. It may only be about 10,000 when the new analysis comes in on El Paso. And we might be able to reduce that by another 2,500 by factoring in an annual runoff from LADWP. So now we're down to 7,500 in deficit. And am I making any sense here? In other words, I see us chipping away at the deficit in terms of new inflow that is realized from El Paso and the potential for an ongoing percolation supply from LADWP, because this is going to happen again. They're going to have plenty of water coming down the mountains, and they're going to want to spread some of it somewhere. And they may not, but they could. So what I'm saying is, we're getting to the point where 13,000 is our deficit right now, and maybe we can take off about 5,000 between, between the runoff that we get and the new discovery of El Paso, which is new information. In other words, we are getting an increase in the inflow from El Paso, I believe. You can correct me if I'm wrong. So now we're only down to about 7,000 or 8,000 in deficit. And I think we could probably buy some of that directly from the farmers in an extended following agreement. So what I'm saying is, this GSP is the problem because it commits us to importing water from the San Joaquin Valley all the way down to Antelope Valley and all the way up here from Palmdale, when we might be able to solve this problem here without any pipeline from Caldevek. And I think we're really making a big mistake by not, and by the way, the corrective actions in the GSP actually want more project alternatives. In other words, this particular project, the AVEC pipeline, is, it's not the only project. So the percolation is something we should really look at. Thank you.
Thank you. So any other public comment from the floor? Okay, I believe we have a caller. Caller, go ahead.
Yeah, I called earlier and didn't give my name, but this is Ray Merrill. And I'm just...
Can you go ahead and mute your tele, our computer, please?
Yeah, I watched the Ground Water Authority meeting, and I've been waiting for I don't know how long to just hear some numbers about where's all this money going, okay? They said they had $4.2 million that they collected from the, you know, Indian Wells Valley Water District, but where's this money going? What are they doing with it? Nobody, in a financial report, you're supposed to say dollars and cents, it's going here and going there, and I haven't heard any of that, ever. So, you know, this whole thing is just, I think it's just a big money grab, but the only people that are making, that's doing any good is the lawyers and Stetson Consulting. And how many, how many millions have they made off of this thing? You know, I know the city council meeting isn't the right time to bring this up, but I mean, you brought it up, so that's just my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do I have another caller? Caller, go ahead.
Yes, I'm waiting.
Caller, go right ahead. You're on.
Okay. I see that in my neighborhood, nobody is using the compost. I mean, there's very, very few that put their compost containers out.
Sir, we're discussing the water, the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority. We've already continued the trash discussion until the July 19th.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That's okay, sir. Did you have any comments in regards to the water?
I'll drop the issue. Thank you.
No problem, sir. Thank you. Okay, we have another caller. Caller, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Mike Neal. So I just happened to return back to where I should watch this little discussion online, and this last caller gentleman wanted to know where's all this money going? Well, it just so happened, I just looked at the, sorry, last GA information on the last meeting and their budgeting information. That gentleman's listening, and for the rest of the country, here's what they're spending a lot of our money on. They budgeted $920,000 for attorney fees. They budgeted $700,000 to pay their Water Resource Manager, all their fees, their whole staff, all that stuff, just for the secretarial duties, the judge, what they call the general manager, $300,000 for that. So, yeah, while we're spending a lot of money, well, now you see why we're spending a lot of money. The lawyers are getting a boatload of it. They've been getting a boatload of it from day one because they've driven the farmers in Thales Valley into lawsuits because they didn't want to be treated so ridiculously unfairly by the GA, and they're still in court over it. And they're going to be there for a while because they don't want to be screwed over. And as to other matters with the, I'm sorry, with the GA, this last little thing that was put out by your general manager saying basically, gee, we could resolve all the lawsuits if all these people that don't like what the GSP has in it would just accept the GSP. Well, the GSP is a problem, and yet we get this offer to just accept it, and let's just move on. Well, you know what? The GA doesn't listen very well at all. I presented them a possibility for cutting water use months and months and months ago, and basically it was just to conserve, kind of with attractive means of encouraging people to conserve water by getting rid of grass and things like that, because if you do a simple calculation, if you just calculate what people in this valley would use, if it was mostly indoor water use and a little bit of outdoor water use, we wouldn't have an overdraft problem at all. The GA won't look at pursuing that, and they have the means that the Water District has the means readily at their disposal. All the surveying has been done. The database is there. All you got to do is start picking out properties to go, you know, propose attractive alternatives to people to get rid of all their grass, things like that, plants like that that use a lot of water, and conserve instead of spending hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars to pump water into this valley from hundreds of miles away, just cut your water use. But the GA doesn't want to go there. They just have been locked on the imported water pipelines from day one. So they want to propose the most unfeasible solution, the most costly solution. No wonder people don't like the GA. Just ask a few questions, see how you think, how popular you think the GA is. Well, it's because they're not listening to people. They're not even elected to the position, so we don't want them there. We don't want them screwing us over with all this cost. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Do I have any other callers? Does not appear so. I'll bring it back to council. Is there anything that you want to address? Nope.
We're good.
Okay. Any other council comments? Nope. Skip. Just double checking.
Well, it's been a long meeting. Otherwise, I would have chatted about this latest correspondence by Carol Thomas Kiefer, GA manager, with regard to a narrative whereby Councilman Lemieux reported that the Los Posas Basin...
These legal counsel for the GA.
Forgive me. Legal counsel.
Head legal counsel.
He's associated also with the Los Posas Basin in Ventura County, and he reports, with wonder, that they're looking over at us, at the Indian Wells Valley, and using our structure to help resolve their water dispute. And this is good because now we can look over the valley at them and use whatever they did to solve our water dispute. The memo itself is closed-loop recursion. If we were programming, this system would go aground. I know we don't have the right people here, or you're not prepared to discuss the extent to which the details that really should have been involved in this, and this appeared in one of the newspapers, I believe, went out, that's, anybody who reads it thoughtfully is going to be mightily confused. I wish, I wish we had some notes on that, but we don't. Forgive me. That was my thought.
So I'll just add to that public announcement. I do think it basically is touching on the issue in regards to the Los Posas Basin. We were one of only eight basins in the state to be approved with our GSP. The amount of work and, let's just say professionalism of the GSP has apparently been a model for some of the other basins, so I personally don't have the extent at which the, how the legal settlements were, I don't think it's been devolved. And so I'm interested, too, as much as you are, to see how and how that settlement was put together and resolved and how that, what parts did they use of ours to reach that, and is it a benefit to our GA and our basin in settling some of the issues that, you know, we had before? So it'll be interesting to see the details of what's behind that letter. So, but I don't have anything to add to it because that's the extent of which we have at this moment, so.
Thanks. Okay. Hearing no other council comment, we'll go ahead and move on to item number nine. Item number nine is a resolution regarding the annual assessment for the Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting District, number 2012-1, and adoption of the resolution approving the annual engineer's report and ordering the levy and collection of assessments for fiscal year 2223. Mr. Reed?
So I'll make this short and sweet. Same report as last time. I have notes on my board for reaching out to the property owners, as per Council's request last time, about six months before we do this, so we can come to an accord and figure out a resolution for next year. Engineer's report is ready for signature and ready to be stuck in the city clerk's office for anybody who wishes to see it. With that, I'm open for any questions.
Again, I think we've discussed this several times, but I'll go ahead and start with Solomon.
No questions.
I have no questions on this.
None.
Nor I.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and put it out for public comment. Is there any public comment in regards to the resolution? No public comment on the floor? Is there any public comment on the phones? Riley's going to flash my phone number up there just for my sake. Thank you, sir. Okay. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and bring it back to the council. If there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the resolution as presented.
So, mode.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Roll call?
Mayor Bruin?
Aye.
Mr. Raj Ratnam?
Aye.
Mr. Hayman?
Aye.
Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent. Motion carries.
Okay, and next item is item number nine, and item 10, I'm sorry. This again is a resolution regarding the annual assessments for the Drainage Benefit Assessment District, number 2016-1, and adoption of the resolution approving the annual engineer's report and ordering the levy and collection of assessments for fiscal year 2324. Mr. Reed?
Again, same report. This one had no discussion at the public hearing. All we're doing is perpetuating the exact same fee to which we lowered two years ago, and I am open for any questions, if you guys have any.
Councilman Raj Ratnam?
No.
None.
Skip? I have no questions. Is there any member of the public which would like to offer comment? Seeing none. Is there any member of the comment on the phones? Phone number's been up. No comment. I'll bring it back to council. I will entertain a motion for approval of the resolution as presented.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second.
Mayor Bruin?
Aye.
Mr. Raj Ratnam?
Aye.
Mr. Hayman?
Aye.
Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent. Motion carries.
Thank you, council. Okay, next is our committee reports, and interestingly enough, I don't think we have any. Finance was canceled due to us already having spent five and a half hours beating each other up over budget, and infrastructure meets tomorrow, so I don't believe...
And that's also canceled.
And that's also been canceled, okay. And I know Mr. Blades is out of town. Okay, so any other boards, committees, or other committees, boards, or commissions? Hearing none? City manager report? Nothing at this time. Future agenda items. Is there any future agenda items which a council member would like to propose? Okay, hearing none. I will go ahead and move to mayor and council comments. I'm going to go ahead and preface with one comment, which is the reminder that the council will not be meeting on July 5th. I hope everyone has a wonderful Fourth of July, and I certainly hope that everyone comes out and joins the community on July 1st at the Desert Empire Fairgrounds for our annual fireworks presentation. They're doing everything possible to make another great event, and we hope to see so many of our community out there and stop by and say hello. I'll go ahead and start with Mr. Gorman. Any final comments?
I do. I do. I thought about the elephant's nose under the edge of the tent recently with regard to artificial intelligence, an issue that I knew would come up, as it does often around here. And I just penned my thoughts. It's not long. Is artificial intelligence a natural, healthy trend, was the question. And back in 1215, civilized humanity decided to live within the structure of law rather than under the caprice of a ruling king or shaman. The sectarian rule of law was, at the time, a bit of a novelty, and I'm sure that there were some that felt that it was exotic enough from what we had become used to as the law of the jungle, where might makes right, to be dehumanizing and uncomfortably sideways from the natural order of things. Perhaps this is so, but I'm... Perhaps this is so, but I'm not sure. I want to go back to those simple, brutal times of anarchy. Moving ahead now to our American experience, we've been busy fitfully trying to balance personal freedom with functional democracy. Benjamin Franklin answered a press query about our new-fangled U.S. Constitution by cautioning, "You now have a representative republic if you can keep it." Freedom is indeed powerful, but as Spider-Man's father said, "With great power comes great responsibility." Today's high-speed, clever, and ubiquitous technology offers disturbing mechanizations for efficiently enforcing all those little laws which claim to bind our representative republic. Indeed, we seem to be nearing a threshold of sorts where enforcement of law becomes removed, or at least distant, from human hands. Is this just another one of our many milestones of evolution? Should we fear its intrinsic unnaturalness? Are we ultimately responsible enough to wield this great new power? Are we really ready for this? I don't know. I honestly don't know. Should we approach it cautiously? I think so. So what's the rush? Those are my thoughts.
Thank you, sir.
So I just have one comment. Today, the USDA and the Food and Drug Administration passed the lab cultured meat to be produced. I find this kind of disturbing. And I read up on as much of it as I could today and some of the stuff that I previously read. It's not news, you know, culturing things in labs is -- it's been ongoing for a long time, including and that kind of stuff. So this new meat will be lab-grown. Once it's, my toasting multiplied into literally billions or trillions of cells to produce a slab of this meat, they add other, let's just say, ingredients to it to have it to assume the characteristics and textures of a real meat, I will call it, so chicken or beef. It will be served in two restaurants. It's authorized to be served in two restaurants. It's not authorized to be out in the stores yet. One restaurant in San Francisco, I found it ironic, the two cities that are going to be serving this, but San Francisco and DC. I find it a really disturbing new wave in our country. So, you know, I read the ingredients, I read labels, I read, you know, farm-raised fish, I'm not fond of after watching Dirty Jobs and Mike Rowe doing a program on how unclean the water is and what it is that they feed the fish. So I try to buy, you know, wild-caught fish, but, and I thought that was an issue. I never thought we'd really see this in our life, that soon coming to a restaurant near you will be disgusting cultured meat. They call meat. We can't call it meat. It's kind of scary because if you follow chronic wasting disease, I don't want to go off on a big diatribe here, but if you follow chronic wasting disease, it's a disease in wildlife, particularly cervids or deer, elk, and other, you know, larger animals. So it was first detected near a wild game farm. And so chronic wasting disease in animals, it deteriorates the brain. It eats away at the brain, and they become like a zombie and they die. It's spread to other animals. And so in humans, it's called Creutzfeldt-Jacob's disease. They say there's not a crossover in, you know, that if we eat an animal with a chronic wasting disease, that it's transmissible over humans, but there may be, you know, some questions to that. But back to the game farm, so they were feeding the animals dairy browse. They eat green, you know, plant matter, particularly limbs and trees. They have low cholesterol. It's evolution over, you know, millions of years. But the food that they fed them in the game farms has added proteins, all these different non-native things that an animal would eat. And as a result, we have chronic wasting disease, which has now spread through a vast majority of the western states and the Midwest. It's negatively affecting the deer herds to the point where it's a huge problem. And so I'm a little concerned about trying to replicate nature and making a lab-grown fake meat and feeding it to the population. But they're doing this in the name of decreasing impact on the earth by the cows and the chickens and the animals. So anyway, food for thought.
Thank you, sir. Solomon?
Once again, I want to thank everybody for participating in today's discussion. After casino, this is the first time it has become a contentious issue. So, but I want everybody to know, we all want to do the best for this community. So we will find a way, and we will try to do the best for the community, and hopefully in the next couple of months, we'll take care of this trash waste management to increase in the rates. So thank you all for your participation.
You too, Solomon.
I just have a few quick ones. It was Spider-Man's uncle.
Oh, it was his uncle? You're right.
Just to keep it light, because it's been a heavy meeting. It was Spider-Man, it was Uncle Ben. That's a sign that I'm still got small ones at home and just saw across the spider verse. Want to thank everyone who participated tonight. It was certainly -- we appreciate and respect and value the community input. I understood most of the input was very strong opinions, and we respect those and we appreciate them. And we will take those into account with, you know, making sure that we're making the best decisions for the entire community. I want to once again extend the invitation to everyone to join us on July 1st at the Desert Empire Fairgrounds for our fireworks presentation. It's a great event, and a lot of people put a lot of hard work into it, and we hope to see you there. I want to remind everyone that if you're interested in seeing the slides from last night's Penny Pool Town Hall, they are available on our website, as well as many other resources that we're continuing to add to the website. We are taking your feedbacks and trying to make them as best as possible for communication, things like the phone number on the YouTube channel and making sure that it's present there. Little things like that, we do appreciate and listen to your feedbacks. I want to take a moment and recognize all, and especially my colleague to the left, his lovely bride, Rotna, and her business, which was represented as business of the year at the Chamber of Commerce. I also had the -- I was not able to be there, but our youth involvement award went to our local Cub Scout PAC, which I happen to have a small hand in, and I really appreciated seeing the kids recognized. And so to all of our Chamber, the Chamber Award recipients, thank you for everything you do. Carol and Nikoi were recognized for their efforts they do for the veterans. Again, thank you to everyone who was involved and who was recognized. We greatly appreciate all of your services, community. And I'll close, oh, sorry, one more thing, which is I just want to put a date on everyone's calendar kind of ahead of time. I'll mention it again at the July 19th meeting. August 5th, our Rich Crest Lions Club will be celebrating their 75th anniversary. It's an important celebration for them, but important for the community to remember that it was the Lions Club that carried the lion's share -- got the pun in there -- of fireworks for more than 25 years for this community. We wouldn't have a fireworks program if it wasn't for the dedicated efforts of former mayor and city council members, Steve Morgan, as well as many of the Lions who, Mr. Etcheberry, Mike, I mean, I could go down the list of all of them, that served and worked to make sure that this community had fireworks for so many years, and we thanked them so much. And it's an opportunity to celebrate if you'd like to join with them at that dinner on August 5th, and he asked me to share it with the audience, and I would. And then finally, just, you know, it was fun for us to have a bit of a contentious meeting and to stress many points. I share in the comments of my colleagues that we represent and we understand, and we're hearing the trash issues, and we appreciate the frustration. I've heard it at home more than a few times, and I continue to hear it at home. I'll probably hear it at home tonight. But these things are complicated issues. They're not just stop it and fix it, change this, do that. They can't be done that way. There's one thing I've learned, the unfortunate part of government, is that bureaucracy is incredibly slow. It can't react like a business can, and we have to understand and represent what is actually happening and changing inside the community at the same time. And I hope that our discussions will continue that direction. And I also have another hope, and that is that I really hope that some people will start actually doing research rather than accusation. We got away from that for a long time, and I hope we don't go back to it. This council's worked very hard to try and put your best interests forward. And when the county put its proposal forward, everyone was very happy all of a sudden that the price point was $180 less for a city resident than it was for a county resident. And they're very happy they still had a billing option rather than being on property taxes. And now the county, because they went back and they're retrenching. And now they're possibly facing $10,000 a day fines for lack of compliance. And I got to tell you, I'm not going to recommend that the city put ourselves in that position because $10,000 a day, just in one month, destroys so many of the things and the objectives and the parks work, and so many of the other things that we're working on, that I'm not going to see us go back to being out of compliance with Cow Recycle. And I understand that's a very hard line for some people to get to, but we were on the precipice already. I don't want to see us go back to that precipice, simply because we're unwilling to see what the actual change is statistically before we see what the reality is. So I look forward to continuing the conversation with my colleagues and with waste management, and I hope that we can continue to find a resolution that allows for us to make sure that we're not putting ourselves at risk with Cow Recycle while still also respecting and trying to address the citizens' needs. Because I happen to agree with you. I've had maggots in my barrel, I've got flies in my house, I've got two barrels and four kids, and I'm experiencing it right alongside with you. But I also understand that I don't want to see all of the other things that this community's looking forward to dashed by fines paid to a state that is enforcing it with will. Okay? Thank you. Have a great evening, and we'll see everybody soon. Have a great Fourth of July.
Thank you.